Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hachkis.
Here.
House.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Snyder.
Item one, and I have the wrong proclamation, so I may have to re-proclaim it. Item number one, proclamation declaring May 11th, 2012 as National Public Gardens Day.
It's not National Public Works Week, it's National Public Gardens Day. Great, Steve, why don't you speak?
I'm here to thank everybody for helping us celebrate National Public Gardens Day. This is a national event that we are, for the first time, working in a great partnership to celebrate not only here in Santa Barbara but across the nation. But as the first of its kind event, we are actually, Santa Barbara is a leader nationwide in having a citywide celebration of National Public Gardens Day. We've arranged a fantastic partnership of gardens, be they both private, nonprofit gardens, as well as great public gardens such as those in the city of Santa Barbara, to be able to host these events and really celebrate what's going on across the nation and celebrate how important public gardens are to our having a great standard of living, a fantastic experience in our towns, and having a great quality of life for each of us. Back in the 1930s and 40s, Santa Barbara actually attracted folks from the east coast to ride on trains out here to Santa Barbara and San Francisco to see just our public gardens. There were public garden tours that came from the entire east coast that would spend weeks just to come out here and see our gardens. We want to make Santa Barbara as important a garden destination as we look into the future, and this year's celebration of National Public Gardens Day is the first step towards that. I'm happy to say that our partnership has developed a great website where we can all post our information at sbpublicgardens.org. So we're already sharing information and making the first step to making Santa Barbara the great public garden destination that it once was again.
Perfect segue, I must say. So let me read, I'd be happy to read this, and then if there are other comments, feel free to bring it up, but why don't you come up closer so it's not so far away here. "National Public Gardens Day is an annual celebration to bring attention to America's public gardens and their important role in promoting environmental stewardship and awareness, plant and water conservation, and education in communities nationwide. And many of the nation's public gardens will mark this day with special events and activities for the community and encourage thousands of visitors to explore and discover their local public gardens. And visiting public gardens is a fun activity for everyone, including families, couples, and outdoor enthusiasts, delivering a low-cost, entertaining, and beautiful community outing while providing education and research on gardening, environmental stewardship, and conservation. Santa Barbara's public gardens inspire us with their beauty and serenity. They play an important role in our cultural landscape and encourage an appreciation of nature and the concern for the preservation and enhancement of the environment. And Santa Barbara's celebration of National Public Gardens Day marks the first citywide collaboration of the public and nonprofit sectors with partners including the Santa Barbara Botanic Gardens, Gona Wallacego Lotus Land, Casa del Guerrero, Old Mission Santa Barbara, City of Santa Barbara Parks and Recreation, Santa Barbara County Parks, Santa Barbara Zoological Gardens, Santa Barbara Foundation, Santa Barbara Beautiful, and Park Foundation, truly making Santa Barbara Garden Town, USA." So now therefore I, Helene Schneider, by the power vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara and the state of California, do hereby recognize the importance of public gardens to our environment, and thank you for all the work you do making this place just spectacular. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, just, Santa Barbara Beautiful is just so happy to be part of this collaboration. It's very special, the Old Mission's involved, parks, the fabulous Botanic Garden, Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, and the fabulous Lotus Land, and especially also Casa del Guerrero, Alice Keck Park, and all the wonderful public spaces that we have. It's just going to be a magic week, and it's going to be held this Friday, May 11th. So, thanks so much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Ms. Rapp, did you have something else? Oh, please.
I just wanted to say one quick thank you on behalf of the Park Foundation for your support and your acknowledgement of what the collaboration has done, and I love how we're all coming together to just keep Santa Barbara as amazing as it is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, we are really pleased with this collaboration, and we have enjoyed getting the recognition nationally that we are a model that now they are encouraging local communities to pursue. So, we're also very pleased with the great number of activities that will be available to our public, both our residents and our visitors, on Friday, which is the actual day, and through the weekend and in the following weeks. So, if I could, I'd like to show you, share with you, a 30-second spot that we have that's running currently as a PSA. You'll recognize the main character. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't do it right. Okay.
Hi, I'm Billy Goodnick, and I just love gardens. Here in Santa Barbara, there are dozens of terrific public gardens just waiting for you, and there are so many things you can do in a garden. You can stroll and stop and smell the roses. How about a picnic with your pals? Or a look back in time? All these living plants make us feel, well, so alive! Get inspired, explore Santa Barbara's public gardens. National Public Gardens Day is Friday, May 11th. There's lots planned. Visit sbpublicgardens.org for details.
And, sorry, now I can't get out of it. I'm sorry, what? Okay. Sorry, now you know I am technologically impaired. That's what happens, you know, when you work your way up in the organization, you just find you rely on so many people that are critical to success, so. But I do want to acknowledge all of our community partners, and we've talked about them, from the gardens, both public and private, and our nonprofit partners, and this whole thing just really couldn't have come together without everybody wanting to make it happen. And, I have to say, for us, I think, you know, we really want to acknowledge the value of our parks and gardens to the communities. We've all been coming through some very difficult times economically, and at the same time that everybody's been struggling with reductions in funding, we have seen an increase in visitors to our parks and our gardens, which is the community talking to us about the value of our role in the community. So, everyone, we hope you'll come out and take advantage of the different programs, tours, carousel rides, everything. Check out the website. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's one, Madam Mayor, we're going to remove item 10. That was the closed session related to labor negotiations.
Okay. So we'll just have that on a future, future agenda. Moving on to public comment, I have a few speaker slips. We have two minutes at the podium. We'll start with Ruth Wilson, and be followed by Robert Burke.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. It's a pleasure to be with you and an honor. I was thinking today about how life is so difficult. We have to expect that, that every day there are difficulties that challenge us, and every day there are joys, if we notice them and take time to see them. And throughout it all, God is with us. He cares about your difficulties, and He certainly supplies our joys. Today, I feel joy coming to be with you. I always look forward to this. Of course, the difficulty we're having is Jack's home with sciatic pain, and it's been going on for three weeks, so he's doing a little better. But I was remembering, three and a half years ago, I was asleep, and the Lord woke me up, and He gave me a verse for you. I wonder if you remember that first verse? It's been interspersed. But it wasn't my verse. It is not one I would have known or brought out. But I want to review that again with you today, because really, He doesn't require a lot of us. Certainly, He wants us to be aware of Him. And then it says here in Micah 7, verse 8, "He has shown you, O man, what is good. And what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God." And I do pray right now, Lord, I pray that Your Spirit would blow through this entire city of Santa Barbara, and that a good amount of it would rest right here in the City Council Room, and that each of these members today would be blessed, and would see the path that You have them on. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you so much.
Give our backs to Jack. Robert Burke will be the final speaker.
Morning, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here today to invite you to the Memorial Day Services on May 28th at 11 o'clock at the Veterans War Memorial Building. The services start at 11 o'clock, please show up around 10:30 because the posting of the colors starts right at 11 o'clock, and they close the doors for that. The featured speaker is Colonel Handy, who is Bob Handy's son, from Civil Affairs Battalion. Robert Marua, UCSB graduate and an Iraqi veteran, will also speak. The ceremony is from 11 till 12, followed by a donation lunch. The public is invited. This is not just for veterans, all people in the public are invited. The fun part, the serious part, is the ceremonies where we commemorate those who have gone before. The fun part is the donation luncheon, when I get to speak to people I would never, ever get to speak to otherwise. World War II veterans, POWs from World War II, an Auschwitz survivor. These are conversations that embolden me and give me a touch with the history that I read about, and I'm able to converse with people who were there. So I invite you not only to the ceremonies, but to stay afterwards during the donation lunch to have conversations with some remarkable people. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Item number three, records destruction per Parks and Recreation Department. Recommendation that council adopt. By reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the Parks and Recreation Department and the administration Parks and Recreation Divisions.
Thank you, and we had a request to pull item number four for a question. If you could read item number four, please.
Item number four, capital improvement projects, third quarter report for fiscal year 2012.
Thank you, Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, I'm Mr. Kelly. I just wanted to walk our way through some of these rather high-ticket items, just so people understand where we're getting our money from and how we're spending it, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Anyone in particular?
Well, we've got, we talked about the Sycamore Creek Channel, Punta Gorda Bridge, Cater Water Treatment Plant, that's another one I thought we should take a look at, and the Public Works, Los Canoas Main Replacement. I'm sorry, I didn't give you a heads-up on all of those before, my apologies.
No problem. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Hachkis, as we tried to outline in the report, the city does have a significant capital program, and in particular, you've noted some of the highlights. The Punta Gorda Bridge is one that we're very proud of and happy with. This is one that has been a full construction in the Lower East Side neighborhood. I witnessed in the storms of 1995, the neighborhood getting flooded on January 10th, 1995, and then just right after, the neighborhood got all cleared up. Talked to several people in the neighborhood, it got flooded again even more severely on March 10th. The intent of this project is to tie in with the Caltrans project, which opened up the bridge underneath for Sycamore Creek at the freeway, and this is the tie-in to it. So this is one where we've kept an eye on for many years, and luckily, we're able to get a federal grant, disaster relief initiative grant, that was tied in, number one, as part of being eligible, as being in a disadvantaged neighborhood, that is also eligible for community block grant, federal grants, information, funding, and also...
I wanted to be sure people heard that federal grant thing, so that's, thank you very much.
Thank you, and that, and also because of the T-Fire, as a disaster mitigation, disaster, future mitigation project. So, that is a $3 million project, and we're planning on constructing that next year, and we think that would be a significant benefit to the community. Then also, as you noted, there's some other big-ticket items, some of that infrastructure that I had mentioned at the, at the department presentation regarding our budget, that we have some $20 million here, $20 million there, of our significant treatment plants. In particular, right now, up at Cater, we have a significant project to improve the disinfection method that we have up at Cater, that's a $20 million project, moving from the standard chlorination that I think most people are familiar with, and moving that to an ozone, which hopefully should reduce taste and odor in the community. We'll find out, and we're optimistic that that would be a significant improvement. Los Canoas, again, this is going to, it's a $5 million pipeline up through the mountain areas of the city. It's a significant length, $5 million is the cost estimate, and we're changing it from an eight-inch diameter pipe that is significantly old, and to a larger diameter pipe, which should have smoother interiors, so it'd have less friction and higher pressure in case of a fire. I could go on and on.
No, no, that's great, thank you very much. Those are the ones I was wondering about, I'm sure you can go on and on.
Know how geeky engineers can be about the stuff that we build.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other items to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes, thank you. Report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee today heard the interim fiscal year 2012 financial report in such a form as it will be eerily familiar to those of us who were there in just moments.
Speaking of, item number nine.
Item number nine, fiscal year 2012, third quarter interim financial statements.
Thank you. Ms. Tora.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm Jill Tora, Treasury Manager, and we're here today with the third quarter financial review for the fiscal year 2012. We'll start today, and I'll go through some of the highlights after three quarters of the fiscal year in terms of general fund revenues, and then I'll turn it over to Ruby Correa, Accounting Manager, who will go through general fund expenditures, talk about the financial results in the enterprise funds at the end of the third quarter, and she'll wrap up with a discussion of the proposed third quarter budget adjustments, which are for your approval today. Starting with the general fund revenues, and I know that recently you've received a number of presentations on the general fund revenues in connection with the filing of the recommended budget for fiscal year 13, and what we do is we come to you with our year-end projections, which become the basis for applying the revenue assumptions for the next fiscal year. We'll go into some of the highlights in a little bit more detail today, so you can see how we came up with our year-end projections, particularly for some of the major variances that we're seeing at the third quarter and expect to continue through the end of the year. We'll start with the general fund tax revenues, and this table should be familiar to you. We present it every quarter. It does a budget-to-actual comparison for the period elapsed during the fiscal year, and over in the right-hand column, you can see it shows the percentage variance to collections for each revenue category through the same period of last fiscal year. Down the left-hand side, you'll see all our taxes that are unrestricted revenue sources receded into the general fund. They include sales tax, property tax, TOT, which is the city's transient occupancy tax or bed tax, also UUT, which is utility users tax, our business license tax, and the property transfer tax. We'll start at the bottom of this table, and you can see that in the first column of numbers is the annual budget. The annual budget for taxes in the general fund for fiscal year 12 is $63.8 million. Moving to the next column, the year-to-date budget, you can see year-to-date budget, which is the three-year average of collections that we typically collect at the end of March for an average three-year period, comes in at $42.9 million. Our actual collections this fiscal year are slightly higher, at $43.5 million. This positive budget variance of $655 is comprised primarily in overages in both sales tax and TOT. Jumping up to the top, you can see that the annual budget for sales tax is $17.9 million. The year-to-date budget is $12.6, and we've already collected $13.1 million, putting us about $433,000 over the year-to-date budget. That's 6.8% above collections for the same period last year, and through regular updates, you know that our sales tax is doing quite well. Same goes with our TOT or our bed tax. The year-to-date budget is $10 million, and we've collected over $10.2 million year-to-date with a positive budget variance of $200,000. That's collections of 9.9% over the same period last year. And these two strongly performing sales tax revenues will go to offset some of the other revenue shortfalls that we'll see elsewhere in the general fund, particularly in, at least in the taxes, the property transfer tax, which is coming in short, and we expect that to continue. We'll move on to other revenues in the general fund. These are general categories, non-tax revenues, including licenses and permits, franchise fees, intergovernmental, and the hulky miscellaneous category, which I'll go through in a couple minutes. We're seeing year-to-date, that the other revenue category is running short of the year-to-date budget by about $132,000, and that's about 1.1% below collections for this overall category of revenues in the general fund. The shortfalls are primarily in two areas, the first being franchise fees. You can see that the year-to-date budget is $2.7 million, and we've only collected $2.5 million, just over $2.5 million at three-quarters through the fiscal year. That's down 1.8% from the collections of the same period in the previous fiscal year. This is due primarily to the electric sector, which is not performing or coming in, the franchise fees on the electric bills are not coming in as we had anticipated, and the utility franchise fees are particularly difficult to forecast because they are dependent on factors, you know, largely outside of our control, which can swing consumption greatly. For instance, the cost of producing the commodity, as well as weather patterns, which can lead to increased or lower consumption, as well as general economic factors of households. So, we expect that to be down slightly at the end of the year. The next category with a significant shortage is intergovernmental, and that $200,000 shortage of our year-to-date budget is due primarily to fire mutual aid revenues, which are coming in lower than budgeted. We've had fewer calls for service from the US Forest Service, as well as other jurisdictions and state fire, and it's unlikely that that'll be made up in the last quarter of the fiscal year. You'll see the miscellaneous revenue category, which is, the annual budget is $9.3 million, and that's made up of several large items, and then a number of smaller other miscellaneous revenues in the general fund. The largest piece of that is the general fund overhead allocation revenue. It's the charges to other enterprise funds and special revenue funds for the services provided by general fund administrative departments like payroll, city attorney, finance, city administrator, and the like. That's $6 million of the $9.3 million budget. We also have city TV revenues in there for about $200,000, library donations from the gift funds, about $271,000. And then we have transfers in from other city funds, including the Risk Management Fund, gas tax transfers in, solid waste franchise fees, and that, those transfers in total about $1.7 million. So that's a little catch-all, but it has some big items in there. The year-to-date budget is $7 million, and you can see after nine months of the fiscal year, we've collected $7.3 million with a positive budget variance of about $351,000. That positive budget variance is unlikely to continue at the end of the year. It includes approximately $333,000 in litigation settlement revenue that was receded into the city attorney's department, and will be likely credited to another city fund by the end of the fiscal year, depending on when we figure out where's the best fund to receipt that, who incurred the costs. So overall, we are expecting this negative budget variance to continue through the end of the year, and we'll move on now to fees and service charges, which are the departmental fees and service charges for fees, or I'm sorry, for services provided to the public. The annual budget for our fees and service charges is $20.3 million, and the year-to-date budget, which is just under 71.8% of the annual budget typically collected at this point of the year, adjusting for seasonality, is $14.7 million. You can see we're slightly below that, at $14.6, with a $186,000 budgetary shortfall. Got some areas contributing to that. In the community development, both the planning and building permit revenue is down, as we've seen construction and development activity be slow to recover from the great recession that we've just gone through. We see a positive budget variance, good news for our Parks and Recreation Department. The positive budget variance of around $188,000 is due to higher registrations in the recreation programs, as well as increased rentals in the parks and facilities, including the newly renovated Correa Rec Center. So the Parks and Recreation, their year-to-date collections already through three-quarters of the fiscal year, their collections are up 12.8% over last year, so that's good news. The other shortfall contributing to the overall shortfall in fees and service charges is in the Public Works Department, and there's a negative budget variance of around $136,000. There were some vacancies in the engineering division, resulting in the first six months of the year of less engineering hours charged to our capital projects. That's, remains to be seen whether we can make up some of that in the last quarter of the fiscal year. There's also been soft revenue in the land development permitting, corresponding with the slow recovery from the recession. So all in all, the fees and service charges on a year-to-date basis are up 0.7%, but we do expect some of these shortfalls to continue, and as I mentioned at the start of my presentation, the positive budget variance in both sales tax and TOT expected at year-end should offset any of the other revenue shortfalls in the other categories. And before I turn it over to Ruby, I'm happy to break for questions.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I will begin covering general fund expenditures. This is a table summarizing activity by department that's funded by the general fund, and there are a lot of columns here, but I will focus on three major columns. The first one is the adjusted annual budget. This column includes the adopted budget back in June, any carryover appropriations from the prior year, and any supplementary appropriations approved by the city council during the current fiscal year. In total, the general fund has a current budget of $103.6 million. The next column is the year-to-date budget. This column has been seasonally adjusted by the average of three years of actual expenditures through March 31, and what this does, it adjusts for payments that occur during certain times of the year, like debt service, recreation programs, summer events. times of the year, like debt service, recreation programs, summer events. This third column here is a column that provides information on where we are through the quarter ended March 31. This is a favorable or unfavorable variance when we compare the year-to-date actual to the year-to-date budget, which is seasonally adjusted. And for the most part, most departments are within budget. We do have a few that are showing major or significant variances. The first one being the city administrators' budget. We had an employee retire in that department that caused one-time costs when we paid their vacation and comp leave balances. It also includes an annuity benefit that she was eligible for. It was a lump sum, a one-time cost. The department does not have sufficient savings to absorb these costs, and so this will be a part of the proposed budget adjustment. The next item is in the Administrative Services Department, and this mostly has to do with timing. We had an election in the current fiscal year, and so most of those costs were paid in the early part of the fiscal year, which tends to front-load the budget. We do anticipate the department to be within budget by the end of the fiscal year. The next several departments are within budget or show favorable variances. So we'll go down to library. Library also appears to have a negative variance. They have done some facility maintenance repairs and re-carpeting at some of their facilities in the earlier part of the fiscal year, but by the end of the year, they anticipate also to be within budget. So it's mostly a timing issue. We are reporting a favorable variance, $131,000, in the Community Development Department, mostly due to unfilled positions during the year, and some of these savings will offset some of the shortfall in community development revenues that Jill Torres described. In total, the general fund is showing a positive variance of $311,000 through the end of the March 31 quarter. Moving on to enterprise funds, similar table. Our first column there is the annual budget, which includes the adopted budget, prior year carryovers, and supplemental appropriations approved by the city council in the current year. The year-to-date budget column, which has been seasonally adjusted for certain expenses that occur during certain times of the year, mostly debt service when it comes to enterprise funds. And then our year-to-date variance column, and I'll focus on two enterprise funds, which seem to be out of line with the budget. The first is the Water Fund, and you have heard a presentation by the Water Department about our water sales. Because we have been successful in our conservation efforts, we have seen a decline in revenue billings, or at least revenue billings not coming in as projected. Linked to that is production costs. Because there's less water usage, we have lower production costs in chemical supplies and in energy costs in producing water. We do anticipate the savings and expenses to offset our revenue shortfall in that fund. Down to the Airport Fund, you've also heard a presentation by the airport staff that revenues are not coming in as projected, mostly having to do with parking revenues not materializing, part of it being a reduction in passenger traffic, some of the construction going on at the terminal, and the closure of the short-term parking lot. The expenses in the Airport Fund show to be favorable at $1.9 million. However, we are expecting to fund, will be funding, our first debt service payment out of airport operating revenues in June. And so out of that amount, $1.1 million will be recognized. We will see some savings in the fund from position vacancies and certain equipment maintenance costs that did not materialize because our equipment, new equipment was still under warranty. Moving on to proposed budget adjustments. The first item is the city administrators' budget, and this goes back to what I explained earlier in terms of the variance in the department. We did have an employee retire that received vacation and comp time cash out, in addition to an annuity benefit that is comparable to the PERS benefit, where an employee can convert sick leave hours into service credit at the time of retirement. We are recommending to appropriate $48,450 from the appropriated reserve in the General Government Department. We currently have about $277,000 available. The Fire Department is requesting appropriation or reduction in appropriations, $48,324 in their salary and benefit categories. They have experienced retirements in their department, and so that has caused for some savings in personnel costs. And we would like to shift that, those savings over to the Facilities Maintenance Fund as of matching fund from the general fund for a grant that we just received. I will be talking a little more in detail in a few minutes about that project. Parks and Recreation, as Treasury Manager Jill Torres explained, we have seen higher revenues. Parking facility rentals have increased by $20,000, mostly having to do with higher rental at the Coria Rec Center. Activity registrations are $60,000 higher than projected. And then if we go down a few rows, reimbursements, $20,927. This is one-time monies for project management fees, park staff managing certain projects funded by the RDA. And we are requesting to also increase appropriations by an equal amount of estimated revenues. Would like to invest in our equipment replacement at the Coria Pavilion Arts Center and the Coria Rec Center, and also to do some facility improvements, including improvements to the old park tennis courts. And last, increase our appropriation for hourly employees to work on park special Other proposed budget adjustments affecting other funds. First one is the T-Fire Disaster Relief Mitigation Fund. This is related to the T-Fire in November of 2008. This grant is still open, and we submitted a request to FEMA to fund the purchase of a tenant sweeper. They approved the purchase as they saw it as an eligible purpose for mitigating hazards. And so we are recommending to increase the FEMA grant revenue, as well as the appropriation. In the Streets Fund, the 101 Operational Improvement Project has come in under budget by about $50,000, and staff is recommending to reappropriate those funds to two other projects, the Lower Mission Creek Project by $30,000, and the Sycamore Creek Channel Improvements Project by $20,000 to complete planned work for this fourth quarter of the fiscal year. The Airport Fund, this is just trying to clean up some initial costs related to the Airport Master Plan Project. The Airport Capital Fund funded about $700 of costs while we were waiting for approval from the FAA for this project. We have received approval. We have submitted our reimbursement claims and received our money, and so we're just making the fund hole that funded those initial costs. The last adjustment is having to do with this Facilities Maintenance Fund. The Fire Department received a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for $193,292. The transfer in, you see for $48,324, is a transfer from the Fire Department for the city's match from the general fund. The total project costs will be $275,858 for a new, for diesel exhaust extraction system in seven of our eight fire stations. And what this does is limits the exhaust fumes that circulate in the buildings, and obviously the exposure our firefighters to some of those carcinogens in some cases. And so that will address that issue, and it will make us compliant with OSHA standards. That concludes my presentation. Be available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, perhaps it's for Mr. Kelly. Right on that slide, the $50,000 reallocation of funds. Just curious why those two projects, out of everything within the Streets Funds, why does that rise to the top?
Madam Mayor, council members, those two projects have been very active with our staff moving them forward, and as such, the accounts to which we've been billing have been reduced to the point where they need an infusion to be able to continue for the rest of this fiscal year.
So the Lower Mission Creek, which part of the Lower Mission Creek project are you talking about?
It is the whole project. It's the same project number we've had for the last 40 years.
Okay, so it's just everything related to the creek there?
Port and county, et cetera.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No other questions? Well, I know the Finance Committee also went through this on their own, so we do need to approve, accept the report and approve the proposed adjustments, if there's a motion for that? Okay. Moved in second, so items, we heard the report, so item B and C is the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any council member committee assignment reports? Ms. Murillo.
Thank you so much. Last night, I was at the youth speak-out on environmental issues, and the Davis Center was packed, and there was a lot of youth support for a ban on plastic bags, just reporting that. The West Side, the West Side Boys and Girls Club had a concert fundraiser over the weekend. And I also went to a fundraiser for Luccumber Junior High School. So our young people, the community's coming out to raise money, you know, private money for these programs. I'm also the ambassador for Chihuahua de Mayo, and that's a month-long Adopt a Chihuahua effort. So I'd like to thank the county animal services and private organizations for doing that. And I'm really a pit bull person, but they tapped me, as I'm just a general dog lover, so adopt a chihuahua, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
That's a huge difference.
Between a pit bull and a chihuahua.
Yeah.
What are you doing with those chihuahua? No, I'm just kidding. I had the opportunity to attend the Park Foundation cruise. They had a sunset cruise on the Condor, and it was a really great event. The money raised for that event is to go towards summer recreation programs for scholarships, and it literally means the money raised there will allow some of our local youth to be able to participate or not. And so it was a nice, it was a nice event, beautiful. The weather could not have been more perfect for that. So kudos to everyone connected with the Park Foundation. Anything else? Okay, if you could read the closed sessions.
Items number 11 and 12, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Government Code, Section 54957.
Thank you, and we'll recess from there and return back here at 6 o'clock for the evening session. Thank you. Slips for items not on the agenda, is that correct? Okay, so we'll move on to item number 13, if you could read that.
Item number 13, Pedestrian Crossing Treatment Alternatives on Milpas Street at Ortega and Yan and Ali Streets.
Thank you. And before we get started, we have Spanish interpretation services available, and if Mr. Settecerro would like to announce that as well, I'd appreciate it.
I'm going to make this announcement in both languages. This meeting is being simultaneously transmitted via Channel 18, and that simultaneous interpretation is fed through those microphones and earphones, pardon, earphones that are there. So if you want to hear the whole meeting in Spanish, you may sit there from the microphone, the earphone, and you will be hearing the simultaneous interpretation in Spanish. If you decide that you want to speak at the time that comes, you want to come and speak in Spanish, you will come to the podium, and I'll be doing the interpretation into English for you through this microphone. Este, esta reunión está siendo interpretada al mismo tiempo en español a través del Canal 18, y ahí están los audífonos para que ustedes se los coloquen y los escuchen todos los procedimientos en español. Cuando llegue el momento si ustedes desean hablar en español pueden venir aquí hacia el podio, y cuando hablen en el podio yo voy a...
Okay. Ms. Anderson or Mr. Bailey?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce Derek Bailey to provide the staff presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council. On October 7th last year, young man Sergio Romero was killed while crossing Milpas Street. In the following month, last November, we, as staff, we attended two very emotional public meetings to talk about traffic conditions on Milpas, and mostly just to listen to the community and get some feedback. What we heard from the community was a lot of frustration about traffic conditions on Milpas. We heard, obviously, some frustration related to the crossing conditions at Ortega, but we also heard some other concerns as well. There's narrow traffic lanes out there that have led to a lot of sideswipe crashes. There's, the narrow lanes have also led to difficult parking conditions and parking maneuvers. There is not a lot of space for cyclists. There's narrow sidewalks, and as well, the trees also encroach into the sidewalk area. Last October 7th, Sergio Romero was about 9:15 in the evening, and Sergio and a friend of his were waiting at the bus stop on the northeast corner. And after Sergio saw his friend onto the bus, Sergio crossed to the southeast corner and then attempted to cross to the southwest corner. Vehicle in the number-one lane stopped, yielded to Sergio, and a second vehicle, going almost 50 miles an hour, passed that first vehicle on the right-hand side and struck Sergio in the crosswalk. So two very significant driver errors led to this crash. One is passing a vehicle stopped yielding to a pedestrian, and the second is going almost 50 miles an hour on a 30 mile an hour street. At the public meetings that we attended last November, we heard about two, over and over again, two locations along Milpas that people are most concerned about, Milpas and Ortega Streets and Milpas and Yan and Ali Street. These two locations are unique in the, on the Milpas corridor between Cannon Perdido and the freeway. They're the only two intersections that aren't signalized. Every other intersection between Cannon Perdido and the freeway is signalized. Those streets, they're different than Ortega and Yan and Ali, though. They carry a lot more traffic than Ortega or Yan and Ali, and for those reasons, they have traffic signals. But again, the frustration we heard of at the public meetings was crossing conditions at Ortega and at Yan and Ali. This slide shows the traffic volumes on Milpas. You can see north of Cannon Perdido, where the Milpas is one lane in each direction, has more of a neighborhood feel to it. There's about 8,600 vehicles per day use that section roadway. And as we move south past Ortega, there's over 15,000, and once we get south of Haley, there's in excess of 20,000 vehicles per day, all the way down to the freeway. So that section between Cannon Perdido and Haley, going past Cota and the Ortega area, is really a transitional area where the traffic is building, going from more of a neighborhood feel to the north to the really busy area of Milpas to the south. So today, we've met with a number of community groups. We've met with Pueblo Coast, Milpas Community Association. We've also met with some of the businesses immediately adjacent to those intersections. And as well, we've also been working with city, citizen advisory groups, and on March 22nd, the Transportation Circulation Committee provided a recommendation, which we'll talk about later, the Youth Council on April 2nd, and the Neighborhood Advisory Council on April As part of our analysis, we looked at a wide range of options and alternatives, and we soon found that two we consider non-viable. The existing marked crosswalks and signs, we don't consider to be a viable alternative. We shouldn't leave things as they are. They're not creating good driver yielding characteristics. They're not helping pedestrians get across the street. And as well, we also looked at a traffic signal, and we don't feel that that's a viable alternative either. Traffic signals, when we do studies to install traffic signals, we look at two things, basically. Are they gonna, is that traffic signal going to improve traffic operations? And by traffic operations, I mean safety and efficiency. So those are the two main things that we look at. There's been a lot of discussion about warrants and how warrants work and what the purpose of warrants are, but we're really trying to get to what's behind the warrants. Warrants really represent something, and they represent the transportation community's best effort to put everything into a formula, but it really comes down to safety and efficiency. In this case, we don't think that traffic signals at either of these intersections are going to be the more safe alternative. Based on our experience operating other traffic signals along Milpas from Cannon Perdido down to Cignatos, we know that these signalized intersections have averaged 10 broadside crashes each over the last 10 years, and comparing... And comparing that to Ortega or Yan and Ali, they've only had one. Now, this is significant because broadside collisions in the urban environment tend to be the most damaging and injury-causing types of crashes. So these are the kind of crashes that we, we don't want to introduce. So obviously with, if we were to introduce a traffic signal at either of these locations, we could be bringing on more vehicle-vehicle type crashes. As well, we looked at the 10-year history for the number of pedestrian-involved collisions. You can see the average for traffic signals, there's about, been about 2.4 at Ortega and Yan and Ali, three each. So there's not a huge significant benefit at traffic signals when we're comparing the number of pedestrian-involved collisions with and without. So it's for that reason that we want to focus on solutions that really focus on pedestrian improvements only and not introduce these vehicle-vehicle collision-type problems into the mix.
We have a question.
Mr. Bailey, somebody sitting in the audience here at home might wonder, why would a signalization increase accidents? And I think that you've explained in the past, but might be worth stating now that there's a tendency that somebody thinks it's yellow, I'm going to make it, and somebody else thinks it's green and it isn't, and you get the broadside accidents that you're talking about. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the traffic signals by nature are intended to increase capacity of an intersection and it does that by allowing traffic to pass through that intersection up to speed. So you've got a condition where traffic from multiple directions can be passing through that intersection up to speed. And if a driver doesn't recognize when they're supposed to stop and they do pass through that intersection up to speed, that's when collisions can happen. We, when we're talking about the number of vehicles a day that use Milpas, you know, we're talking about 15, 20,000 vehicles per day, it only takes a really, really small percentage of vehicles disobeying that red light to cause problems. I mean, we can be talking about .01% and we're still talking about a significant number of people running red lights per day.
I just wanted to explain that so people really understood why.
We, we did identify some viable alternatives and the first one is removing crosswalk and bus stop. And when we did our review, we, we asked the really basic question is, is this an appropriate, are these two locations appropriate locations to be encouraging pedestrians to cross? Or is it reasonable to expect pedestrians to walk 500 feet, it's a little over two-minute walk up and down the street and use one of the existing signalized intersections? And as well, there, the bus stop, northbound bus stop on the northeast corner of the intersection, that's an attraction for pedestrians. Before and after a bus rider gets on the bus, they're pedestrians. So for them to get to that bus stop, they have to cross Milpas. This didn't get a very good reaction from the community. The community felt quite strongly that these should be crossing locations, but one alternative is to remove the crosswalks and bus stops and encourage pedestrians to cross elsewhere. Other alternatives include a median refuge island, neighborhood transition striping, and overhead-mounted flashers. With all of these options, we're talking about enhancing the crosswalks that are already there, adding more, making it more pedestrian-friendly. And with these three remaining alternatives, with each one, we're recommending that some sort of pedestrian-activated flashing device be installed. There's several kinds that have been approved for use. There's the impavement flashers that many people have seen. Studies have been done, those flashers don't have very good driver yielding rates. As well, there's just the pulsing amber beacon. And again, those don't have very good driver yielding rates. The one that we're recommending is called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Studies done by the Federal Highway Administration on test sites have shown very good driver yielding rates in the 80 to 90% range. And we're just going to show a really short video showing what they look like. This is in the city of Berkeley, California. They have a number of these installations.
The Spot Devices Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, or RRFB, uses attention-grabbing strobe lights to warn motorists that pedestrians are in the roadway. The RRFB is proven effective. Independent studies demonstrate motorist compliance and an impressive 80%.
This one here is also in Berkeley. It's just outside of a Bay Area Rapid Transit Station. One thing I want to point out with this slide here is that they've actually got a curb extension built. Some of the alternatives that we were asked to analyze include curb extensions. So you can see what a curb extension looks like in combination with the beacon. And another thing to point out here is the width of the roadway. This roadway is probably in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 feet wide. Milpas is 64 feet wide. So the flashing beacons on either side of the road, while they, they work quite well in, in this situation in Berkeley, with Milpas, you can just imagine those flashers being further out to the side of the road, further outside the driver's cone of vision. So we're, we're thinking that a third device, something closer in, hanging over the roadway or close to the middle of the roadway, excuse me, would be more appropriate and help grab drivers' attention. One alternative is to install a median refuge island at Ortega. The advantage of a median refuge island is it creates essentially two shortened crossings as opposed to one long crossing. Right now, when a pedestrian needs to cross the street, they're having to analyze two directions of traffic, looking for a quite large gap in traffic that they can make that 64-foot crossing. With a median refuge island, it gives them a stopping point midway in the street and they only have to analyze some traffic coming in one direction at a time. An added bonus to a median refuge island is it gives us a location to install a third flasher in the middle of the street that'd be really noticeable to drivers. The trade-off for this configuration is that we would have to remove some parking. Because Milpas Street is configured the way it is with narrow lanes, there is no room for a median refuge island right now. And the only way to create room for median refuge island would be to actually push the lanes out towards the side of the road into where the parking space is right now. So this configuration that we're showing here would remove about six on-street parking spaces for Milpas. Based on the feedback we've received from business owners, these parking spaces are quite valuable to them for customers, deliveries, and for their employees to park. So based on the feedback we've received, losing parking spaces isn't, isn't a good One alternative we were asked to analyze at one of the early meetings is what we're referring to as a neighborhood transition striping plan. This could be done from Cota Street to Cannon Perdido, a three-block area. This is in that area, if you remember back to the slide, with the traffic volumes that were in the 15,000 range. With this striping configuration, we're essentially taking out one lane of traffic in each direction and we're using that extra space to widen the, the remaining lanes and to create a bike lane. This roadway striping configuration, 15,000 vehicles per day is, is about the limit that we can do this. So for that reason, we're not recommending that this be carried any further south than Cota Street. The advantage to this from a pedestrian's perspective is that it's fewer lanes to cross, easier for pedestrians. But there are some other benefits as well. One of the things we heard about early on was the number of sideswipe collisions that are happening on Milpas Street. By doing this striping configuration, the lanes would all be a little bit wider and it's likely that most of those sideswipe collisions would go away. Over the last 10 years, there's been over 40 sideswipe crashes in the section between, the three-block section between Cota Street and Cannon Perdido. Other benefits include easier parking maneuvers because the parking aisle is further away from the traffic lane and space for cyclists.
There's a question from Mr. Oss.
Yeah. Mr. Bailey, when you say that sideswipe collisions are high in that area, does it compare differently to the rest of Milpas, south of Cota Street?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Oss, it is slightly higher, but it is a problem all the way up and down Milpas.
All the way down, okay, thank you.
However, even, even with this striping plan, it would be easier for pedestrians, but in order to make it truly pedestrian-friendly, the crosswalks should be enhanced in combination with the striping plan. There are a number of alternatives that we did analyze. This slide here just illustrates the width of the lanes right now. The, the top roadway shown there, it's essentially, essentially a slice through the roadway, a cross-section, and it shows the width of the existing lanes being 10 feet each and the parking aisle being seven feet. Normally, a parking aisle of seven feet isn't a problem, however, next to a 10-foot arterial traffic lane, it's, creates for difficult parking conditions. The, the cross-section we're showing on the bottom here is, is one way to do that striping plan. You can see 12-foot lanes, a six-foot bike lane, and an eight-foot parking aisle. There's room with these lane widths to slide the lines back and forth by about a foot. One alternative in the future with this type of striping cross-section is the lanes could actually be taken down to about 11 feet quite comfortably and even a five-foot bike lane. And that extra space could be used to widen the sidewalks in the future if that was ever, ever turned into a project.
Are those the same dimensions as what we did, what happened on Cliff Drive? The eight-feet parking, six bicycles? Because it's the same configuration, but is it the same width?
Madam Mayor, yes, they're both 64-foot roadways. I'm just going to back up one slide. This is Upper Dalevena near Trader Joe's. This is a 56-foot wide street. So with the 11-foot lanes and the narrower bike lanes, it, it's still a doable cross-section and as well, that, that's where your extra four feet would come in on each side of the road for potential sidewalk widening. So 56 feet here, 64 feet on Cliff, 64 feet on Milpas.
So the look of that configuration would be like what we're seeing now on Cliff Drive?
Madam Mayor, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
One way to enhance the, the crosswalk would be to install a median refuge island similar to what we showed a few slides ago. It gives us a location in the center of the street to install that third set of flashers and as well, it's a, it's a median refuge. It's a way to divide that crossing up into two stages. Another alternative, and this, this slide shows the Transportation Circulation Committee and Youth Council recommended alternatives. They recommended a further enhancement yet over the last slide that includes a curb extension on the southeast corner. This slide shows the Neighborhood Advisory Council's recommended alternative of a traffic signal as well as the neighborhood transition striping. It's important to note that with the traffic signal at Ortega, it would likely cause the loss of a couple, a couple parking spaces for, on Ortega, east of Milpas, just as we have to create a third lane to separate out the left turns and the right turns. We developed this alternative, an overhead-mounted flashing device, in response to concerns that losing roadway capacity is not desirable, as well, loss of parking, not desirable. So with the overhead-mounted flashers, it's a way of getting a, a flashing device out over the roadway and more noticeable by drivers, but it doesn't affect the roadway capacity and it doesn't affect parking conditions at all. This is a Photoshop simulation. This is actually at Milpas and Ortega, but that's roughly what this would look like. At Yan and Ali, the traffic volumes are quite a bit higher than they are at Ortega. They're over 22,000, 50% higher than they are at Ortega. And because of that, the, the ability to do that striping plan would cause a lot of congestion and likely be deemed really unacceptable by the driving public. So for that reason, we're, we're not showing it as an alternative. Alternatives, Yan and Ali, remove the crosswalk and the bus stop. Again, we asked the basic question, is this an appropriate place to be encouraging pedestrians to cross? And as well, the southbound bus stop at that location, it's, it's an attraction that's attracting pedestrians back and forth across the street. As well, we could install a median refuge island with pedestrian-activated flashers or overhead-mounted flashers, similar to what was just shown for Ortega. We're recommending that the bus stop at Milpas and Yan and Ali be removed. The bus stop right now is what we call a near-side bus stop. In other words, it stops on the near side of the intersection. And near-side bus stops are, we generally try not to install those unless they're at signalized locations. Buses stopped at near-side bus stops can block the visibility of pedestrians wanting to cross or side street traffic. If you can imagine a pedestrian here or a vehicle here wanting to access Milpas while there's a bus stop, that bus essentially blocks the, the visibility completely. One alternative for enhancing the crosswalk is to install a median refuge island with pedestrian-activated flashers. Now, this is a very good solution for getting pedestrians across the street. However, just like Ortega, in order to fit the median refuge island into the street, we actually have to eliminate some on-street parking to, to create room in the center of the street. In this case, we're looking at about seven on-street parking spaces that would be lost. And as well, the donut shop on the northeast corner, there's a driveway here, wouldn't be able to turn left out of their driveway to access Milpas. During most of the day, that is a very difficult maneuver to make, but during off-peak hours, it is possible. And again, another alternative is the overhead-mounted flashers that doesn't affect roadway capacity, doesn't affect on-street parking. All three citizen advisory committees were in agreement with their recommendation at this location. They all thought a traffic signal would be the most appropriate form of traffic control. A traffic signal at this location would mean the elimination of about eight parking spaces on Yan and Ali, on the side street, in order to separate out the left turns from the, through right turns. Other safety measures that we're going to be implementing this summer for Milpas, we're going to be increasing the size of the indications. When these traffic signals were installed, a lot of traffic signal indications had eight-inch diameter lenses. Modern standards all have 12-inch diameter lenses. The surface area is double what they were, so it's more noticeable by drivers, they're more likely to see a red light, stop at a red light. And as well, we're going to be installing pedestrian countdown timers parallel with Milpas. Right now, there's only pedestrian indications to cross Milpas and there's nothing actually parallel with Milpas when you're crossing the side streets. So we're going to be installing those pedestrian countdown timers this summer. Staff's recommendation is to install on the north end, the neighborhood transition striping, median refuge island, and pedestrian-activated flashers. There will be some congestion involved with this configuration. However, based on the feedback that we received throughout the public outreach process, that congestion is deemed reasonable and it, it has the most benefits for all users. There's space for cyclists, we expect the sideswipe crashes to be reduced significantly, easier parking maneuvers, and as well, the number of parking spaces wouldn't be affected at all. The cost to do this alternative is about $170,000. At Yan and Ali, in response to the concerns with the loss of on-street parking, we're recommending the overhead-mounted flashers because of the parking concerns. And the cost for those overhead-mounted flashers are about $82,000. And that concludes my recommend, presentation. And the chairs of the citizen advisory committees, I believe, want to speak to council.
Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to ask the chairs, ah, I see the Chair of Transportation Circulation Committee, if you could state your name for the record? Thank you.
Hillary Blackby, Chair of Transportation Circulation Committee. First, I want to thank staff so much for all of their public outreach. We know they've been jumped through every hoop possible, it seems, and have done a really great job and good due diligence in putting together all the different options. Just wanted to tell you what came out of our Transportation Circulation Committee meeting. We did have a joint meeting with the Neighborhood Advisory Council in March and after much discussion, many hours of discussion, we came to the, the recommendation to you on, with regards to the Ortega intersection, we selected option 3D, which is neighborhood transition striping with one curb extension on the southeast corner. transition striping with one curb extension on the southeast corner, which I think I'll show you. Yeah. So on that corner, where that open lot is, a median refuge island and pedestrian-activated flashers. So on the sides and in the island itself at Ortega. And then at Yan and Ollie, it was... the motion was made to prefer a traffic signal at Yan and Ollie, but if that doesn't work or if the liability issues prevent you from doing that, we wanted to give you another option to see what our preferred... second of our alternative was, and that was option 6, a median refuge island, with, of course, the flashers at the island as well and on the sides. So that's what came from the TCC, and if anybody has any questions, happy answer.
Any questions, Ms. Blackerby? I know that was your first meeting as Chair, and you led that meeting very well. There were a lot of people in the room, so congratulations for that.
Thanks.
Any questions? No, thank you very much. Chair of either the Neighborhood Advisory Committee or... yes, come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. Teresa Penya, and I'm from the Neighborhood Advisory Council. We had so many meetings to discuss this really important issue. I'm a resident of the area, and what we heard from a lot of the residents in the area was they wanted streetlights because it's common sense for the people, the residents that live there. So our recommendation at Ortega Street was a traffic signal, given the fact that there's schools within the area, and we want to make it pedestrians safe because there's so many people that live in the area that walk, they're pedestrians, they walk and take the bus. At Yan and Ollie Street, we would also like... we also recommended a traffic signal. If you go down the entire Milpus Street, when you drive down there, these are the only two missing traffic signals. And so as a driver, and what we heard a lot, is that it just makes sense that you would have this consistent light at each intersection. And then for future, we would like to direct the staff and the Planning Commission to develop and implement a comprehensive, long-term plan and strategy for improving traffic pedestrian safety and beautification for the entire Milpus corridor from Annapremoo Street to Cabrillo Boulevard in an expeditious manner. So please take those recommendations into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here from the Youth Council that's able to speak? Okay, I don't see it. Any questions from council before we open public comment? I have one question about the bus stop. The recommendation to eliminate one in the rationale of why not put it on the other side of the intersection, was that reviewed, or is there an impediment there? Is there a driveway?
Madam Mayor, yes, there is a driveway. And as well, there's a large ficus tree that hangs over the street there that would likely conflict with the bus.
Okay, that was why. Okay. Oh, we do have other questions. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bailey, were the affected or the to-be-affected businesses on Milpus canvassed during your studies regarding the parking issues and options?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we spoke with some of the businesses. We spoke with several of the businesses on each of the corners, and it was quite unanimous that parking was a concern with all of them. We also held a public meeting for the merchants on Milpus, and as well, we sent out mailers up and down Milpus, directing them to a website with all the alternatives where they could mail in comments.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bailey. In terms of the overhead light versus three flashers, two on the side, one in the middle, is one of them more effective than in stopping cars? Please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murillo, I'd be making an educated statement when I say this. There's no studies showing one is any better than the other. However, it's likely from a pedestrian's perspective that the median refuge island would be a benefit to the pedestrians. It does give them that midway stopping point. From my perspective, the third flashing device in the center of the roadway would be more noticeable by drivers as opposed to one off to the side and one hanging out over the roadway off to the side.
But you're recommending the overhead at Yan and Ollie to respond to concerns about loss of parking spaces, is that right?
Yes, Councilmember Murillo.
Another question about the overhead light design. Could it ever be modified to be a traffic signal if the flashing device brought more pedestrians into the intersection?
Councilmember Murillo, yes. Similar hardware would be used to mount those flashers as would be used for traffic signals. It's the same type of hardware that we use at the existing signals up and down the street today.
And then that leads me into my next question about warrants. And at the joint TCC-NAC meeting, you went into an extensive explanation of it, and that was a long evening where I think we really combed through a lot of traffic engineering details. And I think the public should know a few details of what makes... what goes into a warranted intersection, a signalized intersection.
Councilmember Murillo, at the joint TCC-NAC meeting, we looked at this chart here, and there's a lot of information on it, but it shows all the different types of warrants that there are. Warrants are conditions. They're conditions that should be present for the installation of a traffic signal. When one of these conditions or thresholds is met, that suggests that installing a traffic signal would be advantageous. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that we should install a traffic signal, it's just that it could be advantageous. I've worked on projects before where traffic signals have met these warrants, but if we look closer at the traffic conditions, the traffic signal wouldn't benefit traffic. There's big gaps in traffic, low crashes, so even though the volumes might suggest that a traffic signal might be the most appropriate, the reality on the street doesn't always match this. So that's why we dig a little bit deeper. But just to go through what these warrants are, the first three, number 1, 2, and 3, are vehicular-based warrants. The first one is Part 1A, 1B, and 1C. It's what we call an eight-hour warrant. So traffic volumes for the eight highest hours of the day should meet these thresholds. These numbers that we're showing on here are actual numbers from Milpus and Yan and Ollie. Both Milpus and Yan and Ollie and Milpus and Ortega are very similar in terms of side-street traffic volumes. But for this condition, for example, 1A, it's saying that Milpus Street should have, per hour, for eight hours of the day, 600 vehicles. And Yan and Ollie should have, per hour, for eight hours of the day, 150. Milpus is well in excess of 600 vehicles per hour. That wasn't a problem meeting that threshold. But the very highest hour, Yan and Ollie, the highest hour, is only 45 vehicles. When we compare 45 vehicles to the threshold where a traffic signal could be advantageous, it's only a third. So that's quite a big difference. Second warrant is the four-hour. Again, we're looking at the four highest hours per day. It has to do... the reason we compare four hours and eight hours is there's different peaking characteristics. Some roadways, if you look at the volume profile, it's quite flat throughout the day. In situations like that, the eight-hour warrant might be appropriate. During four hours of the day is when we might have spikes in traffic, so we're trying to capture those high spots. And again, with the four-hour warrant, we're looking at 1,300 vehicles an hour on Milpus for four hours of the day, and Milpus does meet that. However, Yan and Ollie would have to have 80 vehicles an hour for four hours of the day, and again, the very highest hour is 45. There's also a peak hour, the one single highest hour of the day. On Milpus, there'd have to be 1,350, and Yan and Ollie, 170. And again, the very highest hour is 45. So the volumes on Yan and Ollie fall well short of the thresholds, which would suggest from just a traffic perspective that a traffic signal would be advantageous. There are other warrants. Number four is a pedestrian volume warrant, but the threshold is quite high. It's 190 pedestrians an hour for any one hour, or 100 for four hours of the day. The highest we observed was 42 in an hour. There's a school crossing at Yan and Ollie. There is an elementary school a few blocks east of here, but we only saw two students crossing at this location. At Ortega, I believe there was 12 or 13 crossing, so there was a few more, but again, it wasn't a significant number. There are other warrants such as the coordinated signal system, which this doesn't apply. That's bunching traffic up to make it more efficient. The crash experience, if it's a high-crash location, like five correctable-type crashes a year, and by correctable, I mean crashes that could have been corrected if a traffic signal were present. If there's a single vehicle that smashes into a light pole, a traffic signal wouldn't have corrected that. But if a vehicle pulls out from a side-street stop sign and gets T-boned by the major street, that's a correctable-type crash. Five per year is required for the warrants, and the highest in any one given year at Ortega was one, and at Yan and Ollie, we haven't had a correctable-type crash there in the last three or four years. As well, there's a roadway network, which is the intersection of two major streets, and bicycle volume warrant, which says that if we have 50 bicycles an hour, it could warrant a traffic signal. So these are the warrants that we look at, and this is a starting point. So we plug all our numbers into these formulas and create this table. That's really our starting point, and then we go back and start doing a deeper analysis into, well, what kind of specific delay would the signal create for traffic? What do we think would happen with the crashes? And like I said earlier, from a public safety perspective, we expect crashes would actually go up at this location, or both of these locations. So our motivation is really public safety for all users of the intersection.
Thank you.
Mr. Francisco? Oh, that's okay. Can I follow up on that? How many warrants in that column... how many need to go from a no to a yes in order for a traffic signal to be considered? Just one, or five, or...?
Madam Mayor, one single warrant can suggest that a traffic signal would be the most appropriate.
Okay. So it's possible, for example, if we were to look at the overhead-mounting flashers... because part of the comments I've heard up to date was that, well, right, there are people that don't cross that intersection because they don't want to, they'd rather go around another block in order to avoid it because they don't think it's safe. But if there was an overhead-mounting flasher that would create some safety in terms of crossing the street, that might lead to more people actually using it, which then might make the warrant... right? Might then make a no to a yes in terms of pedestrian volume. Is that a potential future outcome?
Madam Mayor, yes. It is a potential future outcome. If the overhead-mounted flashers were the chosen device to be installed out there, we will be doing follow-up studies. Probably from day one, we'll be out there observing how traffic behaves, but three months, six months later, we would start doing counts just to see how traffic is changing out there, be it vehicles and pedestrians. However, if it does attract a significant amount of pedestrians and it's working, we might not be inclined to change it. Because, again, with the traffic signal, we would probably be introducing vehicle-vehicle type crashes.
Okay. I mean, but that would be another assessment at that point. So but according to this snapshot in time, there's no yeses on that column, but there could be in the future, which then would lead to another analysis in that... okay.
Madam Mayor, yes.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Thank you. I think I'm grasping this a little bit, so we're going to hear from the public in a minute, but you're... if I get it, then the real concern on the traffic signals is that where we don't have car-car-type crashes, that the chances are that those would increase just by the very nature of putting in traffic signals. And your feeling is that these alternatives, and I'm looking at the back even on the one at upper Milpus, the 3AC, ABC, or BCD and E, including those, that they would significantly improve the situation for pedestrians and not introduce that other conflict, kinds of conflicts between the motor vehicles. Am I getting it right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes. Any of those alternatives would be a significant improvement for pedestrians.
And your recommendation for the upper part would include, because there is the capacity in terms of the street and only two lanes would really be necessary to convey the amount of traffic that's there, not further down, but up at the upper end, that there'd be the opportunity to put a median in there without impeding flow of traffic along with the flashers? And then, I know there's a big empty lot there in the one corner, and the Transportation Circulation Committee suggested that there be one extension, I mean, on that one corner, not necessarily two on each side, it might not be necessary. Would there be any reduction of flow or traffic impediment or anything by adding the curb extension at that corner? I mean, does it... would it cause a problem with traffic, or...?
There aren't very many right turns that would be using that pocket where the TCC and Youth Council recommended the curb extension, so it likely wouldn't have a large impact on traffic. We did talk to the fire department about all these alternatives, and they were concerned about any alternative that included curb extensions. Based on their experience, they didn't have a problem with the median refuge island, but they wanted to make sure there was quite a large area on either side of the median refuge island for them to get around in case there's a stalled vehicle or stop vehicles.
Okay, so it was the combination, then, of the median in there that they had... that you didn't include in your recommendation, the curb extension there?
That's correct.
I get it. Okay, because they've been okay with them other places, so it must be the... I'm just trying to understand that dynamic. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to ask this because I think it might inform and sort of contribute to the public testimony that comes up here. And that is something that's been... was brought up at several of the preceding meetings, and that is that on Cabrillo Boulevard, there are a couple of stoplights that have been installed that may not have been warrant... had qualified per the warrants. And I'm wondering if you could talk about those? And you made one comment in your presentation which caught my attention about the focus here is warrants are a tool for traffic safety. They aren't. It isn't the paint-by-the-numbers kind of strategy here. But since that was raised as a question several times, I think it would be important for us to hear how that... about those Cabrillo Boulevard stoplights, how the decision was made to put lights in there perhaps where they may not, and if they did... blah, blah, blah. If they... were they weren't warranted or weren't they warranted? And then if they weren't warranted, why were they put in?
The two traffic signals that you're referring to, the one is the Pershing Park Bike Path Signal, which is just west of Castillo Street on Cabrillo Boulevard. That traffic signal came... it's actually operated in conjunction with the Castillo Signal. There's one controller that operates that entire... we call it... we actually consider that one large intersection. But the Bike Path Signal was added because there was quite a few jaywalking bikes and pedestrians at that location. The traffic engineer at the time studied that location, and what he found was that because there are not the concerns that we have with the vehicle-vehicle conflicts at that location, and there are the number of jaywalkers that there were at a time, that a traffic signal would be appropriate, we have done... we did a follow-up study as part of this overall Milpus study at that location just to see, has it been... location, just to see, has it been successful? And since that signal was installed, there's only been one crash there. It was a rear-end vehicle-vehicle crash. So, the traffic engineer at the time made a good decision that that signal, now there's an opportunity for everybody who previously were jaywalking to get across with the signal. The Ambassador Park Signal is the other signal along Cabrillo. And originally, there were three signals that were proposed. There was a traffic signal proposed at Cabrillo and Bath Street, the Ambassador Park Signal, and then Cabrillo and Chapala. So, originally, it was a RDA proposal to install three traffic signals in a row in that location. Warrant studies were done for all three locations, and it turned out that the warrants were not met at Bath or Chapala Streets. So, it was decided that a traffic signal midpoint at the Ambassador Park location, there would be enough pedestrian demand from that entire corridor funneling through that one location, that a traffic signal would be a good decision. So, that's how those came about.
So, the cumulative pedestrian traffic to the Ambassador intersection is what became the warrant for a light there. And then, on the intersection to the Pershing Park one, that's considered, our staff looked at it as a single intersection, so it's as if it was a double light at the warranted intersection that is Castillo at Cabrillo Boulevard. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
One last question. Could you compare for me the overhead-mounting flashers you're recommending to what we see on Hollister Avenue in Old Town Galita? Are they the same? Are they different? Because I've always had questions about the one on Hollister, and so...
The one on Hollister is just a pulsing amber beacon, and it's, if it's the one I'm thinking of, it is side-mounted. And the rectangular rapid-flashing beacons, darn it, wrong way, that we're recommending, due to the sequence that they go through, they, as we saw in the video, they pulse quite fast on either side, and they do a lot better job attracting drivers' attention. Studies that have been done by the Federal Highway Administration with respect to just the pulsing amber beacon, driver yielding rates, and that's the, this is the percentage of time that drivers are yielding to pedestrians that want to get across the street, it's about 30%. And with these, in the 80% to 90% range.
Okay.
And we're saying by putting them out overhead or in the center island, I think we can do even better than that. But our concern with both the impavement flashing lights and the pulsing amber beacon is the really low driver yielding rate, and we wouldn't really be improving conditions for pedestrians with either one of those devices.
And this might be a silly question, but I'll ask it anyway. Why is it a yellow light and not a red light flashing?
In the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and that's the manual we have to follow whenever we're deploying traffic control devices out on the street, there's only three types of red lights that are approved for use on the street. Red means stop. One red light is a traffic signal, so red, stop at a traffic signal. A second is what's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Those are, they're a new device, but they're only appropriate for mid-block locations. And the third is at a railroad crossing, stop. In order to stop traffic at either the pedestrian hybrid beacon or a traffic signal, the traffic signal has to go through a sequence to warn drivers that the stop is coming up. So, there has to be an amber light followed by a red light. Yellow lights, they're warning lights. They're warning drivers that there is a pedestrian presence. That's the long answer.
Okay. No, I needed the long answer. Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bailey, I just out of curiosity, do you have pedestrian traffic rates on the other intersections on Milpus?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, we didn't count each and every intersection, but for example, we counted Cota, which is one block south of Ortega Street. During the AM peak, when students would be going to school, the few mornings that we were out there, we counted, one morning there weren't even, there weren't any, there were zero. But generally, between zero and 10 pedestrians crossing at Ortega Street, and there were well in excess of 100 crossing at Cota. So, that's the kind of differences that we're seeing.
That's the main thing I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Okay. That's all for the questions. We're going to move now to public comment, and I have two minutes up at the podium here, and you'll see that number ticking down at the podium. We're going to start with Anna Rico. We followed by Sebastian Aldana Jr.
Can I start now?
Yes, good afternoon, good evening.
Hi. Good evening, members of the City Council, and thank you for taking the time to listen to this very apparent issue. My name's Anna Rico. I work for Coz as a nonprofit organization. We've been working since January 2011 to improve the pedestrian safety on the East Side. The East Side has many problems. Milpus is part of it, but there are many other issues: streetlights, speeding cars, dangerous intersection graffiti, broken sidewalks, dangerous drivers, and school zones. That is really, really bad. Milpus is a big problem, and Coz would like to thank traffic engineer Derek Bailey and Pat Kelly for their hard work and diligence of exploring all the possible solutions of this matter. Coz supports that restriping north of Cota. We believe it will slow traffic down and make the street safe for all types of transportation, cars, bicycles, and pedestrians. Also support the median refuges and rapid-flashing beacon at the intersection of Ortega and Yanonali, and we wish we could be, there could be a traffic signal at Yanonali. But median refuge and the flashing beacons on the median refuge would be the safer alternative, and overhead flashing beacon would not be as effective. And we think a few parking spaces is a small price to pay for the safety of the pedestrians at Yanonali. We strongly urge the council to look beyond Milpus and to take a comprehensive look at the rest of the East Side. Among all concerns, Salinas Street is one of the most dangerous streets in the East Side. Cars getting off the freeway for shortcut speed through the street and don't stop for pedestrians at all, at all. I would ask, and please, schedule an agenda for the item near in the future to receive a report from the transportation staff on and discuss other dangerous East Side areas. If you have driven or walked through Salinas, you will know it's only a matter of time before another accident happens. It's awful. We would learn, we should learn from the lesson of Sergio's death and be more proactive in order parts of the East Side to prevent another senseless death. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian Aldana Jr. will be followed by Bee Molina.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Sebastian Aldana Jr. Today, I am speaking as an eight-year resident of Santa Barbara's East Side. I live two blocks from Milpus and Ortega, and five blocks from Milpus and Yanonali. As a resident of the East Side, I highly recommend signal lights at both intersections. After various accidents, people being hurt or dying after being struck by a vehicle, requests by residents for more than five years, I feel all this justifies for installation of signal lights for both intersections, and this is for public health and safety. I have heard staff mention that by installing a signal light, there would be more side swipes and rear-end collisions. And I did pick one, which was the one that Derek Bailey picked, and it was the one at Pershing Park, and yes, there was one rear-end accident. Thank you for the honest answer. Our neighborhood has been impacted by various issues that Planning Commission, City Council have voted on, and the latest is high density. With the latest hit, little by little, we will be receiving more foot, bicycle, and vehicle traffic. So, with that being said, signal lights should be installed. Please put yourselves in the shoes of the East Side residents, and I am positive you would want the same. And by putting signal lights there, there are no loss of parking along Milpus for the businesses, and no loss of bus stops, which is very important. On the proposed striping diagram, I did see that parking was going to be eight feet. Recommendation, if it could be nine, a bus is nine feet wide, so this way, when a bus is parked picking up passengers, no bicycles would be going around the bus. It just makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bee Molina will be followed by Naomi Green.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Bee Molina. I'm not going to actually make a presentation, I'm just going to make some comments and a reaction to the presentation that was made tonight. One of the first things I want to say is that Milpus, as you all recognize, has a big issue. It's not just about the traffic, it's just not about pedestrian. It's the whole economic profile of that community that has taken a big hit. It's the number of pedestrians there because they can't drive, or they don't have automobiles. It's the congestion. It's a whole slew of problems. This is just one portion of it. But I think not addressing it in an appropriate way creates more problems for everything else that's happening on Milpus. One, this is not the time to take away parking. We cannot hurt the business community of Milpus any more than it's already been hurt due to the economy. This is a community that represents a Hispanic community, and the people have had the courage to build their businesses there. We can't create more barriers for them. Two, removing buses is not acceptable either, in my opinion, because people, you're making people, you're making women and children walk one and two more blocks. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but when they're carrying their groceries and they're carrying their children, and it's raining, and all the other seasonal problems that come as a result of that, I think it's a very poor demand to put on this community. And why on this community? And why on Milpus Street? The other part, I know I have a lot of different ideas. The other concern that I have is that building the design of two blocks, what happens to the bicyclists? On the third block, do they disappear? What happens to the design in two blocks? I mean, it seems to me that there has to be a design that's more consistent all the way up and down Milpus Street because of the traffic and all that. My concern is that you're going to have, you're going to create more flow with bicyclists because for two blocks, they can go, and then what happens?
Go ahead, please.
And then, Milpus and Cliff Drive, you can't compare. One is residential, and Milpus is not residential. Thank you.
Naomi Green will be followed by Javier Limón.
Oh, Madam Mayor and City Council. Well, I too am an East Side resident, a long-term East Side resident, and I live midway between the two intersections. And I've been, and I take the bus, so I'm on Milpus every day. And I've been going to virtually all the meetings that have been held for the different committees and the community meetings. And one thing that comes out from all these meetings is the tremendous neighborhood support for traffic lights. And I know that at one, at one meeting, we were told by the engineers, we were told, well, they recognize we have a lot of passion on our side, but we don't really have the logic. But aside from the whiff of paternalism, I think, I think we do have the logic. I think people who walk there, who live there, they know that traffic lights are safer. If you want to put it in yield rates, you know that with traffic lights, you're in the high 90s. With the flashing lights, you're in the 80s. Well, that's a difference. That's a big difference. And I think that people who live there also feel that the Milpus, they feel that Milpus has been treated a little bit like the city's stepchild. And they wonder if you would propose flashing lights on State Street or on other streets? Isn't there some sort of aesthetic continuity? And doesn't Milpus need that aesthetic continuity? And also, in terms of increased density, doesn't it make sense to put in, to put in traffic lights? Why are we talking about maybe switching these down the line when we could do it right now? And then, we wouldn't lose bus stops, we wouldn't lose parking, and it seems to me a win-win thing. So, that's essentially what I wanted to say.
Javier Limón will be followed by Alan Bleeker.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers? I've heard a lot about, I've been to a lot of these meetings, and I'm still not convinced for flashing lights, okay? To me, red comes out. Everybody understands red, stop. We're talking about crossing the street, pedestrians, saving lives. I hear a lot of this about, oh, it's going to increase collisions. So, you have collisions or life? It doesn't make sense to me, you know? A flashing light, you're telling me I'm going to have to gamble on whether that driver's going to possibly see me to cross the light? A red light, they know to stop, okay? We're talking about crossing the street for pedestrians. As far as collisions, I would love 100 collisions a year rather than one death. That's, I just don't get it, how you can't please vote for signal lights. I oppose the flashing lights. Thank you.
Alan Bleeker and Sharon Byrne are ceding their time, save four minutes, to be followed by Sylvia Yuribe.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Alan Bleeker, president of the Milpus Community Association and co-owner of Capital Hardware on the corner of Milpus and Ortega. Milpus Street is a busy commercial corridor with a major highway interchange, surrounded by three major schools, established residential neighborhoods, and community organizations that serve major portions of the population here. There is no other corridor like it in the city. The street sees multiple uses from these different segments of the community, and whatever solutions we implement on Milpus Street must respect the rights and needs of these various stakeholders. First and foremost, we feel that stoplights are the most appropriate solution for both intersections. The street speaks a dominant language of stoplights, in that eight out of the 10 intersections north of the freeway have them. On Yanonali and Ortega, only Yanonali and Ortega do not fit that vernacular, and both are school crossings, completely unprotected. Let's be honest, drivers are trained to stop for a red light. We've reviewed the city's proposals at length, and this is our position for each intersection. At Milpus and Ortega, solution 5B with road diet and curb extensions is most acceptable to neighbors. It increases safety and preserves on-street parking. The city engineers stated the traffic flows are light enough that it won't create backups or congestion. At Milpus and Yanonali, the neighborhood does not find the proposed solutions acceptable. The traffic volumes are higher there and less willing to stop. The city's solutions break street continuity and cost small businesses on-street parking spaces essential for their survival. If a signal light were installed, pedestrian counts would quickly rise and likely meet the warrants, as has already been discussed. We've recently had conversations with the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans that indicate Yanonali could meet the school warrants now, and further, that a flashing red beacon may be advisable. That could satisfy the community's need for a red light and force more drivers to actually stop. Whatever solution is installed, the frequent reviews Mr. Bailey suggests are critical. They should assess neighborhood fit, safety, and traffic flows. Finally, this work on Milpus must be the start of a long-term plan for this street to give it a more Boulevard feel and increase usability. Our community stands ready to fully participate in planning our street's future. Thank you.
Sylvia Yuribe will be followed by Olivia Yuribe.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Yuribe, chair of the Latino Democrats. I would like to call your attention to something that I thought was interesting. Initially, in the last meeting that we all attended for hours and hours, this project was pedestrian safety project. However, tonight, it seems that it has changed the focus and it's traffic project. The Center of Staff's recommendations on what's best for traffic, not for pedestrians. Pedestrians are at risk when cars are not forced to stop for pedestrians, particularly when they are going over 25 miles per hour. Only a traffic light will make them stop, as you well said a minute ago. Staff tells us that lights are not warranted at those intersections due to low pedestrian traffic, and it might not be good for cars again. And it has been mentioned before that there are other lights on Cabrillo Boulevard that weren't warranted either. However, they are there to protect tourists. Why not protect Santa Barbara residents? The city says, and it's been said in general, that this is an emotional issue. We want to clarify that the reason that we and the area neighbors are here and have expressed themselves is for practical reasons. People want to be safe, and want their families to be safe when they go walk to school, go shopping, et cetera. The emotional part comes when the city repeatedly ignores the request from the community, and lives, and lives are lost because of this, as in the recent case of Sergio Romero's and Mrs. Rodriguez a few years back. Then, it becomes emotional. Finally, the city tells us that if they put non-warranted lights and a traffic accident happens, the city can be successfully... happens, the city can be successfully sued, and they want to avoid that. Then are the non-warranted lights on Cabrillo also making the city potentially liable for a lawsuit?
Go ahead, please.
And do we really believe that if another pedestrian versus car fatal accident happens for not adequately addressing the problem on Milpus Street, the city won't be liable? Please, we urge you to vote to install traffic lights at both intersections. Thank you.
Olivia Yurube, be followed by Abel Maldonado.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Yurube with Latino Democrats. We've had, there have been six meetings in seven months where people, members of the community, residents of the neighborhoods most affected have been present time and time again. That's a lot of time of a lot of people. Latin Dem surveyed the most affected residents, and 74% said they supported the traffic signals, which, at both intersections, which is what we support. All three committees have supported the recommend, an optimal recommendation of traffic signals at both intersections. And one of, one of the concerns is the lack of a cost comparison option ahead of the decision gives the appearance of a predestined, predetermined outcome. Ultimately, the decision is up to this body, and it's true that the city can be liable either to the state or any community member, organization, or individual. As was the case of last year, in San Diego, settled a wrongful death suit for $1.8 million. So we know, because they didn't appropriately address the community concerns of that incident. The community members are asked to show up and participate and participate in community issues that affect us, and we expect that this participation is honored and listened to by elected officials who are elected to represent those opinions or to, to represent what the community wants. The solution of flashing lights with three or six-month studies sound good in theory, but who's going to enforce that? How, how do we know that's going to be a long-term solution with the right outcome? Thank you.
Abel Maldonado, be followed by Sally Foxon.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, for the record, I'm Abel Maldonado, and I'm here this evening as a concerned citizen. You might know that I have an office at 724 Milpus Street, and I also have a little experience with local government. People have asked me to come here and say a few words about what's happening on Milpus Street, and I said that I would be glad to do it since I have a little bit of experience. I have firsthand knowledge of what's happening on Milpus Street. I know it's unsafe because I see it when I'm there, and I'm there quite a bit. When I opened my office, everybody that walked in, the only thing they wanted to talk about were the traffic signals at Ortega and Yananali. People walk in my office every day, and they want to talk about the traffic lights at those two streets. I see high school kids and junior high school kids walking there every day in high numbers, and I also see a lot of homeless people walking there in the evening and actually late into the night. I see a lot of bicycle riders on Milpus all the street. And last but not least, I see a lot of cars coming down that hill, going south on Milpus Street. And I don't know what it is, but it's just about coming down that hill, they come down very, very fast. While I've only been there for a month, Madam Mayor, some people that are here today have lived there their whole life and frankly have made it clear that they'd love to see traffic slow down a little bit. I believe that the best and most effective way to slow traffic down is to put a traffic signal at Yananali and Ortega intersection. I've been through this before, Madam Mayor, as an elected official. I know it's a very emotional issue when you go through this. I can just imagine what the mother is going through and their family. And when I was in your shoes, people would always bring up this notion of cost, and I know that cost is an issue, but public safety is more important. I'm sure that we've heard that if you do it here, you have to do it everywhere. Well, there's been fatalities, fatalities at this intersection. I'm heard, I'm sure you've heard about liability. We always hear about liability. Well, guess what? The city of Santa Barbara and every city in California actually is in the business of liability. You are the deep pocket, and you're always going to be liable for what happens on the street. I'm sure you've heard that traffic signal warrants, that these are important, and they are. I watched staff present them, but they're only a gauge for you, and I'm winding up, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. I know they're only a gauge for safety and efficiency. You can put a traffic signal there if you want. And I'll just close with this. I know that you have many options, Madam Mayor, and I hope that you choose slower traffic and more control and the highest standard of safety for the people that live in the Milpus area. And the highest standard of safety is a traffic signal at both Ortega and Yananali. The people want it. Thank you.
Sally Foxon will be followed by Rose Aldana.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I would first like to address, rather, the issue of warrants. Thank you, Mr. Francisco, for asking the question of whether or not there was a count taken at any place other than Ortega and/or Yananali. As suggested, the vehicles and pedestrians count is lower at Ortega and Yananali because people want to avoid these intersections. Only makes sense that the count is lower. The issue of loss of parking, if I'm not mistaken, there is an empty lot at the corner of Milpus and Ortega. I urge the city to purchase that lot, bring in new revenue, let people park there. I also understand that the thought that adding signal lights at these two intersections may cause more vehicle-to-vehicle collisions, however, they may not. There is a flip side to that. Obviously, we don't have statistics on that because there are no traffic signals there. I would also like to urge you to listen to the will of the people, to install traffic signals at both Yananali and Ortega Street. There is also one person that I would almost guarantee, if he were here, would ask you to have those lights installed at those intersections, and that is Sergio Romero. I ask that you do not let his death be in vain. Thank you.
Rose Aldana, be followed by Guadalupe Gonzalez, and the final speaker will be Santos Guzmán.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. On May 20th, 2011, I went to the City Council meeting and handed in a 514-signature petition for signal lights at Yananali and Ortega Street. I handed it here, and now we're coming to the conclusion of what you all are going to determine to do. What I'm handing you today is a statistic report that was given to me today by the Santa Barbara Police Department. And in there, you'll see that 2010, there have been vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle. 2011, there's been pedestrian, vehicle, motorcycle accidents. October of 2011, we've had pedestrian and an auto accident, consisting of a death and a very damaged truck. November 2011, a motorcycle T-boned an automobile at the corner of Ortega and Milpus, as the motorcycle did not see the car coming because there was a truck blocking that was stopped to allow that car to turn and make a left turn south onto Milpus from Ortega. So that was a, this statistic report shows that it's a motorcycle accident. The motorcycle hit a car. The bike, the motorcycle driver flew over the vehicle. So that was a T-bone accident. In March, we've had a pedestrian who was hit by an auto. You know, we had a broken ankle and a broken leg. There are different accidents that are happening at Ortega and Milpus. Pedestrian, auto, bicycle. We need stops. We need, we need the signal lights, as requested in the petition submitted to you November 20th. And with that, I would like to ask that you please vote for signal lights. So is that everyone, drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, everyone is safe on Milpus. Consistent driving patterns, because insistent lights makes us safer in Milpus. Thank you.
Guadalupe Gonzalez, be followed by Santos Guzmán, and then the final speaker will be Sheri Fisher.
Buenas tardes, Alcántez.
Good evening.
Y buenas tardes, al consejo.
Good afternoon, members of the council.
Yo soy la mamá de Sergio Romero.
I am the mother of Sergio Romero.
Que falleció el 7 de octubre.
Who passed away.
En un accidente de velocidad.
Speed accident.
Y negligencia.
And negligence.
Yo les pido a ustedes.
I'm asking all of you.
Desgraciadamente, lo, lo he repetido muchas veces.
I have repeated this many times.
Como yo, hay mucha gente ignorante en las leyes.
Ignorant of the laws.
Que no sabemos nuestros derechos.
Our rights.
Pero ahora que murió mi hijo.
But now that my son has died.
Mi hijo mayor, y que era un gran, una gran persona.
My eldest son, who was a great person.
Y no quiero moverles en sentimientos.
I don't want to move your feelings.
Yo lo único que quiero que sepan.
I just want you to know.
Y que piensen.
And to think.
De qué sirve dar una mejor educación a los hijos.
To give our children a better.
Los padres y las madres levantarse temprano y trabajar.
And the fathers and mothers getting up early in the morning to go to work.
Si los que estamos en las leyes.
The ones that are within the laws.
No hacen una educación para que los peatones.
Don't create an education so that the pedestrians.
Y el tráfico.
And the traffic.
Empiece a tener un señalamiento de luz.
Some kind of traffic signal.
Yo estoy muy segura.
I am very sure.
Que si pusieran luces.
That if you put a traffic light.
La gente hacemos caso a las señales de luz que es en rojo.
To the signaling.
Y en verde.
Red and the green.
Yo pienso, como, como residente que vine a este país.
As resident, that I came to this country.
Pensé en la seguridad de mis hijos.
I thought of the safety.
Y creo que todos los que estamos aquí estamos en la seguridad misma.
I believe that everyone present here also.
No me import, no me importó el saber que cuando yo viniera a Santa Barbara.
I didn't care to know that when I was coming to Santa Barbara.
Me decían que era un lugar turístico.
They were telling me this was a tourist.
Caro.
Expensive.
Y con mucha seguridad.
And with a lot of safety.
Eso a mí me llenó mi corazón.
That filled my heart.
El pensar, como todos ustedes, en ser mi abejita al lado de mis hijos profesionales.
Grow old next to my childrens.
Desgraciadamente, la calle Milpas está llenándose de tráfico, y desgraciadamente, no hay la seguridad.
There is no safety.
Para parar el peatón.
To stop for the pedestrian.
Lo que dijo el señor Carvajal.
What Mr. Carvajal said.
Que de las montañas al sur vienen los carros demasiado rápido.
The cars from the mountains toward the south, the cars are coming very fast.
Cosa que, por esa razón, murió mi hijo.
That's the reason my son died.
Y yo les pido a ustedes.
I'm asking all of you.
Que de verdad piensen en las luces.
Truly.
Yo respeto el trabajo de los ingenieros.
The work of the engineers.
Respeto todo el trabajo de toda la gente que ha estado aquí.
That has come here.
Pero, por favor.
But please.
Yo no tengo vida.
I have no life.
Lo he repetido.
I have repeated this.
Antes de pararme aquí.
Before I stood right here.
Tuve que tomar pastillas porque.
I had to take some pills.
Es una vida de vivir en las nubes.
It's a life of having, like, being in a cloud.
Es una vida triste el saber que una persona tan brillante como mi hijo, Sergio Romero, like my son, that brilliant person. Haya perdido la vida.
Lost his life.
No hay vida, señores.
There is no life.
Les pido, por favor, por todos los hijos.
For all the children.
Que tenemos, señores.
That we all have.
Ayudemos a tener un Santa Barbara seguro y feliz.
Let's have Santa Barbara that is safe.
Por favor.
Joyful.
Yo no estoy en partido de nada.
I am not on any party.
Estoy en el partido de las madres.
I'm in the party of all mothers.
Y de los padres, queramos todo, por ver a nuestros hijos felices.
To see our children.
Y seguros. Muchísimas gracias por todo.
Thank you very much for everything.
Gracias. Santos Guzmán.
My name is Santos Guzmán, and I have a small business on calle Milpas. It's a little restaurant, and I come to here to explain all, or to say all my experiences that I've been having during 16 years that I've been there. And recently, the last couple weeks, a couple traffic cars almost hit a old lady because there is no stop, any sign, any lights in there, only the white strips on the, on the streets. And I've been telling you for a couple times that if you don't put any stops or any sign, any lights in there, sooner or later, they, the people, they're going to have, or the drivers, they're going to cause an accident. Three weeks ago, some Spirit truck almost hit a bicycle. And if you don't do anything to correct this problem, in the future, it's going to become another problem. And that's not all. My complaint is that, separate from the stop sign or the, or the crossing or the white strips in the, in the Milpas and Yananali, there is another problem that a lot of residents, they leave a, a big trucks in there, they leave pickups for more than, than 24 hours, when the limit time to be there is only, I don't, I don't remember, it says 75 minutes or 90 minutes. And only I come to here to tell you my experiences. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
All right.
Sheri Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, and members of the council. I'd like to publicly say to Ms. Romero that I understand that one of the very last things that her son did was a kindness to a friend, walking him to the bus stop, paying his fare, and walking away from the bus stop. And I want to also appreciate the people tonight who have said, don't do anything to the buses, we need the bus stops. But I did want to give you some facts about those stops before you make your decision. One thing is, Mr. Aldana said the bus is nine feet wide, he's just about right, and the road diet certainly suits us. If you can have more room on the road for the buses, that's certainly going to be convenient to us in the width. As far as the bus stop at Milpus and Yananali, we've already closed it. A nearside stop at that corner just is not what we feel is the safest, nor does the city. We've closed it. There's a bus stop at, well, what I, what I'd just say is McDonald's, the easiest way to describe it. So it's not, it's about a block and a little bit away. And then as far as the, so I want you not to have to think in terms of whether the bus stop is going to be open or closed as you make your decision. As far as the bus stop at Ortega going up the hill, there is a bus stop within a block of that stop. We're not recommending closing it, but it wouldn't be a long walk if somebody had to walk that extra block. I do understand what everybody said, it's always difficult to walk a little further, but I don't want those to be your overriding concerns. I'd like safety to be your concerns always. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that closes public comment. It's to the council. We may have general questions, but we might want to separate out Ortega Street and then Yananali Street because they're two different intersections. That might be one way to do it. Of course, if you have comments on both of them at the same time, that's fine, but I have a feeling, well, we might need two, at least two motions, one for each intersection. So just a suggestion. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wiley, a couple of speakers have talked about legal liability. Can you give us some advice, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murillo, well, the first thing I want to say is that I, I know that I, as the city attorney, and the city attorney's office, has never said in connection with these concerns about Milpus, that there is a liability concern, that the city should do something in order to. in order to protect itself from liability. What I have said, and I, you know, I should also add that I've been in meetings with Mr. Bailey, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Bailey has never said that the city is motivated by protecting itself from liability. What I have said, what I've heard other city staff people say, is that we wanna do the right thing when it comes to public safety. And what I saw Mr. Bailey present tonight in his presentation, and particularly in his explanation on the question of warrants, is the best explanation I have seen ever about how this works, and also it's a very significant piece of what the law provides to encourage cities to act in ways that protects public safety. And by that I mean, he is referring to empirical studies. He's referring to the scientific approach to traffic safety that's based on empiric studies, you know? And I'm no expert on this, but I've been a lawyer for a while, and I think I understand what the context. In other words, we've been driving automobiles in this country for about a hundred years, and Canada the same way. I think traffic safety, by a traffic safety expert, the law encourages you to use that expertise and to use the the statistics we have about what causes, what protects public safety when it comes to traffic control devices. All of that empirical evidence in North America developed over decades of information as a scientific approach to public safety. So, when the question comes up about, will cities say, "Well, won't the city be liable?" or "If it does this or doesn't do this", what the state law provides is a city can be liable if it doesn't act in accordance with this empirical approach. If it doesn't act in accordance with the traffic safety standards, the state and federal standards that basically are the book that's in on Mr. Bailey's desk and the city engineer's desk at all times in terms of figuring out how to control traffic in a city. I mean, I guess I can't add more. The law, in fact, the Tort Claims Act says you can be liable if you actually act contrary to traffic safety standards. You're, as a city, I think someone mentioned this, you're always gonna get sued. But it isn't necessarily true that the public, that the city somehow must pay simply because it operates an intersection, or it owns and maintains streets. That's just not the case. In California, whether a city is liable or not is a matter of statute, and that's the Tort Claims Act. And the Tort Claims Act says, if you design an intersection or traffic control improvements in accordance with traffic safety standards, you're generally encouraging public safety, you're acting to protect public safety, and therefore, you're not liable. If you ignore those standards, a statute, another statute says, you do so at your own risk, and you may be liable. But again, it's all about this understanding of using our experience to protect public safety. And I don't need to go into, I think Mr. Bailey gave a great explanation of what we often call the unintended consequences. You know, a serious injury or fatality is no less tragic if it's vehicle-on-vehicle, as opposed to pedestrian-on-vehicle. And one of the concerns here is to think about, are we somehow going to act to increase vehicle-on-vehicle collisions? So, I hope that answers the question.
Right. I think it was a long answer. Thank you. But so if we put traffic signals in either of those intersections, and there's an increase of car-on-car collision, and there's even a chance of a car-on-pedestrian collision, isn't that right? Even if there's a traffic signal, pedestrians get hit by cars in signalized intersections, right? Okay. And we're going against the warrant, then there is legal liability?
Councilmember Correio, it's just not that simple. But generally, that's correct. It's a lot more complicated than that. We will, I'm pretty sure, if there is a serious accident, and it a lawyer can show there's a connection between that accident and a city action that was contrary to empirical traffic safety standards, they will make that argument. We will probably not get the case dismissed on summary judgment, meaning it would go to a jury. And that means you could be held liable.
I may have other questions as we go along, but that's it for now. Ma'am?
Thank you. I have a question, too. You mentioned, Mr. Bailey, the count at Ortega was ten, and Cota was a hundred. Cota is the street that's the entrance to Santa Barbara Junior High, so that makes sense. Was there a count at either De La Guerra or Cannon Perdito at all?
Madam Mayor, no. Cota was the only nearby intersection that we counted.
Okay. But we would assume that there might be a dramatic increase in pedestrian crossing at that intersection because the entrance to the junior high school is on Cota. I mean, that would, right?
Madam Mayor, based on the pedestrian walking patterns that I observed on the street, I didn't observe many pedestrians walking parallel to Milpas through the Ortega intersection. Most of the pedestrians were coming out of the neighborhood to the east. Even during the AM peak, there are substantial gaps in traffic during the AM peak, and there just weren't any pedestrians taking advantage of those gaps. So, in my estimation, at Ortega anyway, during the AM peak, we wouldn't see a substantial increase of pedestrians even with the traffic signal.
Okay. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, has to do with what if a, let's say that we were to move ahead with staff recommendations today, and then what would it take to then come back and reexamine the intersections over time to see how they're performing? Would it be accident rates that we'd be looking at would be kind of the key litmus test for reexamining this and seeing whether this was right or not? What would you be thinking either you or your successor would do in that situation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, initially after a traffic control device, especially a significant one that we're potentially looking at this evening, goes in, we do keep a closer eye on it. So, in the following months and probably even a year or two after a new device like that gets installed, we're looking at delay, how much delay a new traffic control device is causing. We're looking at the traffic volumes, which would suggest a shift in traffic patterns, potentially more pedestrians being attracted to an intersection, as well as how is the new traffic control device affecting traffic itself? And then we're also looking at crashes. And we'd be doing that for probably the first few years, more intensely, right at the beginning. And that sort of data collection is quite time-consuming, so as time moves on, and it appears as though the traffic control device is working, we're gonna pay less and less attention to it. The crash research is quite an easy thing to do for us. Just because there's a program on our computer, we can use the statewide database to look up crash data. But to actually go out there and do counts and delay studies is pretty labor-intensive, so as time goes on, if it appears as though the traffic control device is working the way it's intended, we would spend less time without evaluation.
Thank you. And one further question, and that is, what I heard was that in each, at each intersection, if a signal, full traffic signal were put in, that there would be the loss of parking, that that would be basically mandatory for a traffic signal to go in. Is that, was I reading that right?
Councilmember White, this is the diagram of Yananali. And what would bring about the loss of side-street parking? It's actually at the intersection, we would split out the left and the right turn lanes to make traffic exit the side-street more efficiently. We operate our traffic signals on Milpas in a mode, it's what's called semi-actuated. And what that means is, the light only stays green long enough on the side-street for that side-street traffic to exit. And then the green turns back to Milpas. It's a more efficient way of operating the signal, and it keeps traffic moving on Milpas better. So, in order to flush the traffic on the side-street quicker, we would separate out the two lanes. It wouldn't be mandatory that we do that. It would just mean a less efficient traffic signal, and the light would have to stay green or longer for the side-street.
Okay, so the safety issue, the loss, the retaining of the parking would influence the efficiency of the intersection, but not the safety? Would that be?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. House.
Just wanna return to our conversation we had a few minutes ago. You had mentioned the issue with the fire trucks and the fire department. I understood the staff's recommendation was a painted median, not an actual island. Was I misunderstanding then the diagrams that we have here? Because that wouldn't impede emergency access in any way, would it? Or any other sort of flow? If it were necessary to move over and use that striped area?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we are recommending a raised median. It would further enhance the crosswalk, and it would add to location in the center of the roadway for a third flashing device. However, a painted median would be configured exactly as you're seeing here. It would also be an effective way to enhance the crossing. It's just there wouldn't be a place in the middle of the street for that third flashing device.
I see. Okay, it was just two things. I was confused. I was reading the recommendation in a staff report. Maybe I didn't get it right on B. It said implementation of a neighborhood striping transition, which is, I guess, some are calling it road diet or whatever that is. Painted median and pedestrian-activated flashing lights. So maybe that was just a typo in the staff.
That is a typo, yes, should be raised.
But if it were to have, I'm looking at the TCC Youth Council and NAC Preferred Alternative, it has one curb extension and then a a median refuge, which could be a painted median refuge, which would address the issue that you talked about a few minutes ago.
Councilmember House, yes, a painted median is something a fire truck could drive over quite easily.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find out if there's some way that these three organizations or groups, rather, that made that recommendation, if that was just off the table automatically because they had a a median refuge, or if it would be a painted median treatment that would serve as sort of a dead zone for cars, but a place a person could just wait if they got stuck there.
Mm-hmm. That discussion didn't come up at the meetings, raised median versus painted median. A raised median is more noticeable by drivers, so the benefits to the pedestrian would be greater. It is still a space where pedestrians could wait. But I think as a pedestrian, they feel more comfortable when there's that hardscape element next to them.
I wanna kind of cut the chase on it. One big issue here that I have, and I know that we're hearing from neighbors and people who have been organizing around this issue for a long time, and I mean, we can go back for decades, really. This has been an issue. The upper Milpas area, there was a proposal made many years ago by the East Side Study Group, which was a kind of a road diet approach, and some striping was done to try to test it out, but the issue's been around for a long, long time. And so people have kind of grasped onto the apparent sort of obvious thing about, you know, let's put in, you know, signal lights at these two unsignalized intersections. And it kind of, it's a tough one to wrestle to the ground, because underneath that is, we need to make it safer. And so I'm looking to your professional judgment, and it's a tough one, because we're gonna be making a call up here in a few minutes. And you're making a recommendation which goes against the common wisdom. I mean, the common sensibility of a lot of the folks that are in this room is that a traffic signal would just make it safer. People honor those red lights. I mean, I'm guessing that you're making your recommendation based on what you think is the absolute safest possible thing for pedestrians and for the people who are driving the vehicles or whatever. Say it plain for me, because I really need to understand that. Is what you're recommending the truly safest thing that would address these people's concern, even though they believe that a traffic signal is really, would be the obvious, most perfect thing? Or it doesn't matter that much which way we go ultimately, you know? Could it be that just we put a traffic signal there and it solves the problem? And maybe there's a few more fender benders, and it's not that big of a deal? I mean, help me out here.
If I could just switch to another slide.
And as you're doing, I just wanna say, I think that in this room right now, there's not a single person here that wants to do anything but make this the most safe possible, the safe place we possibly can, to address the issues and the concerns that we've been hearing. I'm certain of that.
This chart that I'm showing you, there's a lot of information on it, but it shows the ten-year history, intersection by intersection, of how many broadside collisions there have been. So, starting at the top, in the last ten years, there have been eight at Cannon Perdito, eight at De La Guerra, eleven at Cota, thirteen at Haley, twenty-three at Gutierrez, eighteen at Montecito, eleven at Mason, and eleven at Quinientos. As you can see, there's a variation. It changes by intersection, so it's impossible for us to fully predict what's gonna happen at any of those intersections if a traffic signal were to go in. Could be more, could be less. All we can do is base our opinion on the experience that we've had out at these intersections. Based on our experience at these other intersections, there is a likelihood that vehicle-vehicle crashes will increase. So that's a safety concern we take very seriously. And as well, the pedestrian-vehicle crashes, there's only been a slight decrease when you compare Yananali and Ortega to the signalized intersections. So, what we're trying to do is find a solution that focuses on pedestrian safety. I feel pretty strongly that the solution we've proposed at Yananali, or pardon me, at Ortega and Milpas is gonna get pedestrians across the street safely, just as well as a traffic signal. And it will not introduce the problem of vehicle-vehicle crashes. I feel quite confidently about that. Yananali is more difficult. It's a wider street. We don't have the option to reduce lanes down there. But again, we have the same risk of increasing vehicle-vehicle crashes. And again, we don't know how many there could possibly be, after all's we can do is speak with what we know has happened in the past at our other signalized intersections. The two solutions that we've proposed out there that enhance the crosswalk, the median refuge island and the overhead flashers, both of them will provide improved pedestrian crossings, conditions. It's impossible to predict whether or not there's going to be crashes over the long term. Sooner or later, there's likely gonna be a crash, no matter which alternative we go with. So, at Yananali, it's it's more difficult. Either of the alternatives will be an improvement for pedestrians, and it won't be introducing the vehicle-vehicle crash problem.
I understand. And then, lastly on that, Yananali and Milpas Street, I mean, by the time you've gotten to Yananali and Milpas coming down, you're not, it's not coming off the hill. You're now in the urbanized area. And whether you're coming up the other way, you've already gone through a couple of stoplights, and then and you're coming down, it'll be the same way. So, it seems like that's the, somebody used the word vernacular, that's the language of the street at that particular point. Traffic signals are like just what you see at an intersection, except for this one. And so, it would seem that, just, I mean, again, I'm just testing this out here, it would seem that based on typical motorist behavior, they're gonna be expecting a traffic signal at most of the intersections, and you would expect a traffic signal here. And yet, your proposal is for something that's really distinct and quite different. And this is a behavioral kind of question. So, based on driver behavior in a certain environment where you've got a kind of a certain vocabulary, is there a benefit to introducing something different, or would it be better to stay, do you think, I mean, just set aside maybe the statistics, but just in general, to stay with what's expected for the driver?
There's really no way of accurately predicting which would be better until we actually try it. You know, I understand the logic of what you're saying. And the flashers would look different in that area of the corridor. And looking down the street, even as you're on the other side of a traffic signal, a block or two down, the flashers block or two down, the flashers would look different as to how drivers are going to react to those flashers. We know that it's going to draw the driver's attention that there's a pedestrian present. But whether or not they're going to react significantly different than if there were a traffic signal there, we really can't say.
Okay. And we wouldn't take away a signal and just, and put in just a flasher somewhere? We wouldn't do that, right?
The reason the signals are at the other intersections along the corridor are for traffic reasons. You know, there's enough side street traffic that those signals are needed to serve that side street traffic for efficiency reasons. When we talk about the traffic volumes on Yan and Ollie and on Ortega, we're talking about volumes that are under 1,000 a day. The next least busy of all the streets, cross streets on Milpus that have a traffic signal, the closest one is over 4,000 a day, all the way up to 8,000 and 9,000 a day. So there's a significantly higher amount of traffic on those other side streets than there are at Yan and Ollie and Ortega.
Right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see Sergeant McGrew is here, and I know that he's been involved with traffic enforcement on Milpus recently. And I wonder if I could start by asking Sergeant McGrew to come up and tell us a little bit about his experience there and his observations and what he thinks adds to safety on Milpus Street.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, during the past, probably since about January, the motorcycle traffic unit has been fully staffed. And what we've done is each officer is assigned at a different location or beat in the city. And what we have been doing is that we've been given a lot of attention to the Milpus area. We have an officer that works that area, that's solely what he does. We also have other officers that help out and overlap in that area just because of the traffic, the concerns and the public interest that's come up. We've conducted a couple stings, pedestrian crosswalk stings, and they've been quite alarming just as far as how many people violate pedestrians right of way. We did that shortly after Sergio died. We also did it back in, on March 22nd, we did another one. And we also, we conducted other stings throughout the city, but Milpus was probably our biggest hotspot and that's where we wrote most of the tickets in a shorter amount of time. So what we, another thing that we've been doing is because of the staffing levels that we have right now, we're able to become more involved with the schools. We're in contact with the crossing guards and education programs that are helping people and educating people as to safe pedestrian behavior. One of the reasons that we do these things is that the media, they give us a lot of attention. And, you know, it's a good platform to talk to people about, hey, this is, you know, everybody's got a responsibility here. The drivers have one and so do the pedestrians. So, you know, we deal with a lot of the education enforcement. You know, there's three Es to traffic safety, and that's engineering, education, and enforcement. And, you know, we, we're obviously the enforcement part, but we also participate in the education with other programs that the city conducts as well. So that's been our efforts. You know, we're happy to say that, you know, we're able to respond to more of the concerns that have come up by the communities. And we're going to continue to do the stings. It seems, everybody seems to like it, and we always get positive comments from everybody. But, and I think it's bringing more attention to folks. So even folks who don't get caught in it, they'll call me up at the office and they want to know the laws about it and, you know, hey, when do I have to stop? And so it's a good tool for conversation and education.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming out tonight. Accidents are terrible things. An accident in which someone loses their life or is severely injured is a really terrible Just a couple of weeks ago, there was a lady crossing Upper State Street at Caillou Palo Colorado who was severely injured. She's extremely fortunate to be alive in an accident almost identical to the one in which Sergio Romero lost his life. Same circumstance, she was crossing a crosswalk that does not have a lot of traffic. And one car stopped for her. She started to cross. Another pickup truck did not stop. And she was very, very lucky to survive. And she's going to be in rehabilitation for quite a while. I was reminded of another accident five or six years ago at Correo and State Street. A woman crossing with two children was hit by a driver. This was sunny day afternoon. The other driver ran a red light. The driver was not drunk, not distracted. She made a human error. So traffic signals are not absolute protection. Crosswalks certainly are not. And I think Sergeant McGrew said, one of the things we all have to be aware of is, to some extent, we're all responsible for our own safety. When I cross the street with a green light, I'm always looking. Because drivers, we have distracted drivers, and as I said, anyone can make an error of judgment. And maybe you only make one of those in your life, but the results could be terrible. I agree with what our city attorney, Mr. Wiley, said. I think that Mr. Bailey has done a really excellent job studying these intersections, studying the traffic, trying to understand all the characteristics there and what we can achieve in terms of public safety. And I realize that the immediate impetus for this study was the death of a pedestrian. But also, as Mr. Wiley said, people lose their lives in automobile accidents as well, and that's something that we have to be cognizant of. As far as I know, there is no attempt here to cost engineer this. The cost is not the issue. What's the issue is what is the absolute best solution in terms of public safety? I think that's, I'm sure that's all anyone in our engineering department cares about. That's all anyone up on this dais cares about. We want the best possible solution. And every neighborhood in this city, we look at them all in the same way. We're looking for where are the biggest problems, whether it's a question of sidewalk infill to make a place more friendly to pedestrians where we've got a lot of pedestrian traffic, traffic control of various kinds. Our Public Works Department is always looking at the city as a whole and trying to see where are the biggest problems? Where can we use the relatively limited money that we have to the greatest effect in the most dangerous areas? Where are we going to get the most bang for our buck? So I believe what Mr. Bailey has proposed here is really, as far as I can tell, the best possible solution for these intersections in terms of overall safety. And that really is the only concern. Neither of these projects are currently on our capital improvement budget. Somehow, we're going to find a way to make this happen. So again, it's not a question of money. It's a question of what is the best solution? And in this case, I feel quite confident that what we're hearing from our engineers, also what we're hearing from the police. I'm glad that Sergeant McGrew is here tonight. And we really need, I think, to emphasize this whole idea of education. It's shocking to me that there are people who are drivers who don't understand right of way. They need to be educated. Our children especially need to be educated. Roads are inherently dangerous. They really need to look both ways all the time. And just because, even if you've got eye contact with the driver, don't necessarily think they're going to stop. Don't necessarily believe that a turn signal means they're going to turn. Everyone has to be aware of those things at all times. And unfortunately, no matter what we do, no matter how well-educated people are, no matter what kind of traffic signals we put in, there are still going to be accidents. And that's just a terrible fact of life. But what we as a council, I think, can do, working with staff, is to come up with the best possible solution. Every solution is imperfect, but the best possible solution, given the resources we have. And that's why I would support both of the recommendations by staff for these intersections. Thank you.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bailey, can we talk about Milpus and Ortega, please? I want to compare your recommendation or your staff's recommendation to what the TCC and the Youth Council had because the crosswalk is, you're proposing something a little different, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, I'll start with ours recommendation. The median refuge island, that median refuge island could go on the north leg of the intersection or the south leg of the intersection. Either side would work. The reason we're only showing a crossing point on one side of the intersection, and that's a consistent theme throughout all the alternatives that we've been showing, is that it concentrates the pedestrians into one location and it increases the driver's expectation of pedestrians being in any one given spot. And it essentially trains drivers to learn that this is a pedestrian crossing location. You're more likely to encounter pedestrians at this spot. So like I said, our recommended alternative would work on either the north leg or the south leg of the intersection. What the TCC and the Youth Council showed, we originally had analyzed for the TCC and the NAC, an alternative that had curb extensions on both sides and a median refuge island. And the reason the one curb extension fell off is due to concerns that we talked about with the fire department. And having that clear width between the median refuge island and the side of the road. So this balances that width. There's more than a full lane on either side of that median refuge island. The reason it's on the south side of the road as opposed to the north side is it doesn't affect the bus stop. So with this alternative here, the bus stop can remain operational safely and still have the pedestrian benefits.
So you're okay with this? But if we went with your recommendation on the other side, we would ask that the bus stop be removed?
With the...
It's up there. Yeah.
Right. This is our alternative here that we're showing. Because there's no curb extensions involved, the bus stop won't be affected. So on any of the alternatives that involve the striping plan, the bus stop can stay safely.
Well, let me say that pedestrian safety is an utmost concern for me. And I would be willing to trade loss of parking spaces. And I guess I'm talking about Yan and Ollie now. The median refuge is exactly a refuge. And I know when I'm darting across, it really is a safe place to wait, especially when there's a lot of traffic. So we have a choice at Yan and Ollie, the overhead or the three beacon. And I would go for the three beacon with the one in the middle because it seems like it would stop the cars better. Even if I'm compromising the ability to put in the overhead device that could be modified to be a traffic signal. So I'm going to let, I'm going to let that go because I think if people, there's a lot of people crossing there, Milpus and Yan and Ollie, and the three would stop them. And so I'm introducing that into our conversation up here. And I feel strongly enough as well that we can lose a bus stop or two if that also helps discourage people running for the bus. I feel strongly comfortable going that far but stopping short of a traffic signal. And I, for the sake of Lupita Gonzalez, I wish I could put in the traffic signal for you if it would relieve your pain. And I don't think it would, but to make a gesture, I would consider it. But I have to rely on the expertise of our staff. And I really appreciate, because I've been the liaison to these different groups, the passion, the concern, the people who signed the petitions, and I wish they could all be here right now to see how complicated this is. And to understand that traffic warrants and the different complicating layers all have to be taken into consideration and even legal liability. I said the same thing last week when we were talking about taking over State Route 225. I have to not do things that cost us money needlessly in terms of legal liability. I'm sorry, I got a little emotional, so I'm losing my train of thought a little bit. So I'm generally for your recommendations. And to take it a step further on Yan and Ollie, if that's, if that seems like something that we could all go with. I would also encourage a rigorous traffic enforcement and any other, you know, sort of on-the-street, not hardscape things that we can do. And it's not my style to chide staff, but I'm going to upbraid you a little bit for, it's true, people have been asking for traffic signals for five years. Why didn't we communicate with them five years ago about the complicated nature of all of this? I know you weren't here, Mr. Bailey, and you're just on the hot seat tonight, but people have concerns and maybe with the Neighborhood Advisory Council or other means, opening communication with the community that we could have addressed their concerns and not made it five years of feeling ignored. And I do believe that the whole Milpus corridor needs analysis and review. Again, we are limited, public safety, we don't have a price on public safety, but there are some limitations that we have in terms of, I think, a long-term view of Milpus. And other things on the east side. I did hear you, Ms. Rico. So that's where I'm at. And thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a question. Mr. Bailey, does anything that Ms. Fisher from MTD said about the bus stops, does that change any part or any of the options?
Councilmember Rouse, as far as the bus stop at Ortega, I'll start there. Other than the first alternative, removing the crosswalk and the bus stop to discourage pedestrian crossings at that location, all of the alternatives that we've developed can maintain the bus stop. So, you know, we're totally flexible in that way. And I think that bus stop can operate safely. So we'll work with MTD, you know, if they want to remove it, we'll work with them. But with these other alternatives that provide an enhancement, there's no reason it has to be removed. As far as Yan and Ollie and it already being removed, you know, that goes right along with our recommendation. And as far as what it'll do if the crosswalk were to be removed, it's one less attraction to get across the street right there. You know, and it'll reduce the demand on that crosswalk. But as far as the enhancements, the pedestrian median refuge island or the overhead flashers, it would reduce demand, but it would improve the visibility of the flashing devices and any pedestrians that wish to use that crossing and side street traffic. So fully support the closure of the bus stop at Yan and Ollie.
Well, flexibility from both sides is going to, I think, going to help out a lot. You know, Milpus is a really unique street, as somebody said earlier, and I agree with the Neighborhood Advisory Committee that a general plan, a big picture, a long-range plan should be developed. And I certainly think that we're all here, unfortunately, because of what happened to Sergio Romero. But really, what we're trying to do, we're trying to accomplish the right thing for this street in a changing, evolving neighborhood, a street that goes, you know, through certainly residential and commercial areas and has to serve a lot of traffic and potentially... residential and commercial areas, and has to serve a lot of traffic and potentially provide emergency egress out of a rather densely populated area. So there's a lot of problems to solve. You probably wouldn't sit down at a chalkboard and design the street the way it is today if you had the choice to do that. So, I mean, the easy thing for me to do, because I don't want to lose lanes, I don't want to lose parking, would just say, and then make everybody happy, and say we should do traffic signals. But I'm not sure the easy thing to do is the right thing to do. And I'm not thinking about costs, and I'm not thinking about liability. I'm thinking about what's the right thing, long-term, for Milpus. And I've personally been involved, from a volunteer committee member standpoint in traffic and circulation, since 1992 in this town. And all the areas we've examined, all the traffic patterns we've looked at, all the stoplights, all the sidewalks, you know, I've never, you know, I've been through a couple of traffic engineers, but I've never thought I was a traffic engineer, and I never thought I could design something like that. I have to rely on your expertise and your opinion. And I truly do appreciate, and you and I have met outside of this meeting, outside of the community meetings, and talked about this, and talked about these presentations. And I know that a ton of thought and a ton of time and a ton of effort went into this. And you're certainly an engineer and a numbers guy, but you're not speaking strictly from an engineer and a numbers standpoint, and I truly personally understand that. I don't want to anecdotally put something in because it's the popular thing to do. I think this needs to be qualified. I think it needs to be precisely engineered, and I think that it should go forward per staff recommendations, with the idea that, at some point, it can be looked at again. As a matter of fact, the plan is to look at it again, and look at it again soon. I think that's the rational thing to do. I am certainly, once again, not in love with losing traffic lanes going down Dakota as proposed, but if that's the big-picture solution that's going to work for the community and to make this work, I think we've got to bite the bullet and do that. Certainly, the businesses can't afford to lose any parking. That's already pretty dear on Milpus as it is. So I am going to be supporting the staff recommendations going forward. Thank you.
Can I get a clarification of what you said? I'm sorry to interrupt the process here, but when Councilmember Mario asked you the difference between the staff recommendation and the TCC and Neighborhood Advisory Commission or Committee recommendation, I wasn't quite sure if I understood whether you thought either were okay or why that one was preferable. Could you please clarify that for me?
Madam Mayor, the difference between our recommendation and the TCC Youth Council recommendation is the single curb extension on the one corner.
Right.
So either would work very well.
Okay.
I'm confident that what we're proposing is enough, but certainly more would further enhance.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you. Mr. White. Oh, then, Mr. Hotchkiss, sure, you're ready to go. Go right ahead.
I've been really quiet here. Actually, there is one other difference between the TCC Youth recommendation and yours, is that yours allows people exiting the bus to cross right there, and the other one requires them to make two crossings, which I think is unlikely to happen. So I think it'd be very important to leave the crossing on the upstream side of Milpus. Secondly, it's not shown here, but actually on the downstream side of Milpus, as I mentioned before, there actually is sort of a minor curb extension from, oh, I don't know, 990 feet towards Suparica to that corner. So, I mean, it's already there, is what I'm trying to say. So I don't think that the TCC thing is an improvement. I think it's not an improvement. This is better. Could we go -- oh, no, that's all right. Let's stay here for a second. All right. On the southwest corner, right there, good, thank you, there are two or three small businesses that have absolutely no off-street parking at all. So one of the important criteria for me, so that people understand, is that we -- that small businesses have easy access to them. Every patron is important, and I think that that criteria actually also applies on the other intersection as well, although, as everybody here has said, it is a matter of safety. But, and "but" is the wrong word, safety, though, is the determination that all of you have, and our responsibility also, I think, is safety. But when we say, as several people have pointed out, public safety, we're saying not only safety for people that are crossing there, but people that are driving there. So that's not a satisfactory answer, I think, if you're a pedestrian there, but if you're a driver, for either a tourist or a local, we should take those things into consideration. And I'm not an engineer, and I don't think most of you are traffic engineers, so I have to rely and will rely on professional recommendation here, that even though it may not feel that it works the way you would like to, like, sort of, is apparently common, a stoplight, I do see that how a signalization there on either of those intersections could increase injuries or accidents. I think the -- several people have said, and they're all right, that there's a -- we need a general look at Milpus and should take the time to do it. It shouldn't be rushed. It shouldn't be in response to a specific awful incident, but it is something that down the line would be good to do. In six months or a year, whatever we enact tonight, could we come back and look, and let's say that we -- I personally don't like the diminution of road space going south, but I think my colleagues have made good arguments in that, for that. In six months, could that be changed if cataclysmically it doesn't work out?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, striping is reversible. It's expensive to do so. The cost estimate that we provided for the alternative showing up here, the median refuge island, the flashers, and the striping plan, for $170,000, close to $100,000 of that is restriping, just because we have to slurry seal those three blocks--
Right.
-- plus some of the block between Coda and Haley for the transition.
Okay.
So changing it back would be expensive, but it can be done.
Right. All right. So I don't want to look at this as just a temporary solution, but it is doable if, for some reason, there was a compelling reason to do that. I do think that the new -- it seems to me that the new flashers will really get a lot of attention, however we install them, and I think that your recommendations on both intersections are excellent. I'm sure they were -- took a lot of sleepless nights and long days, and thank you for doing it. And I also compliment you on your professional, even-voiced and calm presentation on what could have been a much more charged issue. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a question. Ms. Mario proposed a Yanonali alternative that we may have discussed earlier, but as we're at this stage, could you kindly compare those, her recommendation with the staff recommendation, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the recommendation, or pardon me, I shouldn't say recommendation, the alternative that Councilmember Mario was speaking of is the median refuge island. And operationally, what it would provide is the three sets of flashers, rather evenly spaced, going across the street at a single horizontal level. My opinion, a very good solution to get pedestrians across the street. However, the trade-off is the loss of on-street parking.
How much on-street parking would be lost?
About seven spaces.
Seven spaces.
In the area just north of the donut shop and here, there'd be about three spaces lost.
Okay.
One down in that area, and two down near the southwest corner. That's in contrast to staff recommendation of the overhead-mounted flashers. Because the flashers are hanging out over the street, there's no effect at all to the roadway configuration or parking. Not as elegant a solution to get pedestrians across the street as the median refuge island, but will be much more effective than what pedestrians have today.
And no loss of parking?
And no loss of parking.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I'll back up a notch on my comments. Well, first of all, clearly, the tragedy of the loss of Sergio Romero brought us here tonight on this topic. But also behind that was the transformation of the various center advisory groups to the Neighborhood Advisory Council. This change occurred in concert, or just in coincidence, with this tragedy. And this became the first real topic that the council had to wrestle with. And I'm grateful that the city -- this effort has been years in the making, and it just happened to coincidentally get here at the same time. And I really appreciate that the conversation was, it was the right place with the right people having this conversation. And I think that it was a -- whereas, it might have started as a, okay, a little bit of graffiti, or not a little bit, but our graffiti issue could have been the conversation that came to the council first, but it wasn't. It was the death of a boy and the safety of a street. And I commend the council for taking it on and putting your brain and your brains and your heart into it and bringing it forward here with standing up for what you think is right, and certainly showing the urgency. And I know that you get that we up here are taking you very seriously and taking this issue very seriously. And I'm grateful that we've now got this Neighborhood Advisory Council launched, because I think it's going to make this city a better place, a better community. And one of the things came out of this that surprised me, and I'm interested even to hear my colleagues speak to it, and that is, three blocks of road diet came out of this, which I thought was going to be hugely controversial and would likely not happen. And yet, it came out of the community, came out of the neighborhood, and it comes out of our advisors as well, our technical staff. There was a coincidence, a confluence that occurred there on a huge change to Milpus Street. It's getting a little bit of conversation up here, but it's just done. It's just happened. So that's a big positive change that's in the bag. And now we're struggling with these other pieces, and we have our -- and I also appreciated Mr. Bailey's discomfort when the Yanonali cross-examination occurred there about how well, which is going to be better. And we had a very frank answer of that he doesn't know. And that's, of course, we are all looking into the future, and we don't know. But, and also, my colleagues have praised Mr. Bailey, and I do too, with having Welcome to Santa Barbara, and we threw you in the deep end of the pool, and it was a very -- it's been a very difficult first venture for you, and we really appreciate your work and your heart that's clear, that clearly has gone into it. So as to my conclusions, I come down on the recommendations of staff. I think it's a place where we can go, where we've got -- we're not losing parking, and I think that's an important issue for the economic activity on Milpus Street. And my colleagues have spoken to it eloquently enough that I'm not going to drag folks through more of it, but the parking is a very important issue for me. And then finally, I will move to the Milpus Street as a whole. We now have a committee. We now have a vehicle for this conversation. Plan Santa Barbara, thank goodness, we've gotten through much of the conceptual work already, but this fits right into the spirit of Plan Santa Barbara, of trying to wrestle back our town for people who walk and bike. And we've lost a couple of little battles in here along this last few years, as the sidewalks haven't been expanded in a couple of places where they might have, but we're not going to lose any more. We're going to get more sidewalk space as these new developments come in, and definitely will be a better street to live on. And there'll be other suggestions and other ideas and other brainstormings that will occur with this now, this new council that we have to work with this on. So thank you all for taking on this task, and it's been a hard one. It is a hard one. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. House.
A real quick question for staff. On the, with the staff recommendation on the Ortega Street site, there's a refuge island in that, we just went through all that, I just wanted to be sure I really understand it. And yet, your recommendation is, and even though you seemed very strong about the value of the visibility of having the three lights, you had, at least if I read it correctly, you were suggesting the overhead cantilever-type arm there. After our conversation and hearing at least some interest, do you, would you consider putting the light in the middle there, where it would be right down, where drivers would really see it, at this location here? It wouldn't change any of the parking impacts or anything if you were to do that, so?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I'm not sure I understand the question.
You're -- I'm talking about, I -- no, no, I'm, No, Ortega. Ortega, you've got a median already in the proposal, right? A median refuge. Okay, so, but your recommendation did not include, it included the overhanging blinking lights, no? Or were you recommending the three lights at this location?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes. At Ortega, we are recommending the median refuge island with the three lights.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that's good.
At Yanonali is the overhanging lights.
And that was for this issue of the parking, and that was your way of meeting both of those interests?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, just wanted to be sure, really was clear. One other, sort of a piece about the scoping, we've heard a lot of interest in a longer, long-range plan, more comprehensive plan, probably, is the right word. Now, in my, to my lights, and I've heard people speak to it tonight, but from my experience, given that we've also had fatalities on the east side on the cross streets from Salinas, and Salinas itself is acknowledged as a very serious, you know, that's an issue right there. That, and at one point, I mean, this has been a long time ago, but we talked about Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan kind of approach for that area, between Salinas, including Salinas, you know, the school over there, all that, and the cross streets over to Milpus, that area needs a comprehensive look, because it all sorts, sort of hangs together. Now, it's bigger than just dealing with Milpus itself, but you hear the interest that's in the community. These are concerns. Where would something like that, and if we're looking forward, we want to give it at least lip service tonight, but where would that show up in the future? I mean, if we said we want to see some planning and some, you know, real study of these issues, where and how would we get there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I would suggest that the place that that most logically fits is in the implementation of Plan Santa Barbara, because we do have several identified corridor analyses or transportation planning efforts that are part of the implementation, expected to be a follow-on to the adoption of Plan Santa Barbara. And this, I believe, fits into that kind of consideration and can be prioritized through that effort, based on the other areas that you're also aware of, I'm sure, of interest and concern in the community.
Okay, then perhaps what could come out of tonight, and out of all this work, is that we indicate this is something we want to see, at least-- we indicate this is something we want to see at least studied at a very high priority. This would be one of those really important projects, that we would be looking for some study when it gets to that part of the implementation. All right, well, then, I can't really do better than what my colleagues have done tonight in saying how heartfelt the whole community is about this, and how deeply we all feel about this. And I want to really, you know, honor a young man whose life was so tragically taken and just, you know, just taken away from us. And what we're doing tonight follows perhaps in the tradition of the Jake Boizelle multipurpose path, for instance, or the fact that we have responded by making things better when we've had a tragedy like this. And I believe that's what's happening now. And I believe that the interests that are underneath the community's concern and willingness to stand up for traffic signals at these intersections is actually echoed by a city council who may be very right at the edge of taking staff's recommendation, because it's our goal to make this as safe as possible for pedestrians and for all users of the So, with just nothing but deep appreciation for everyone's participation, including the city council's deliberations here, I am moving the staff's recommendations for the restriping, gone-by-road diet, but the restriping with the median refuge and the three beacons at the Ortega Street intersection, and the staff's recommendations for the improvements with the signal or those lights that are up on the mast arms there. So, staff recommendation at both locations. And also that the council indicates its interest in a high prioritization for a long-range comprehensive plan of the area, including Salinas and the cross streets to Milpus and Milpus Street.
There a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Okay. Thank you all. And, you know, I'm sitting up here, and I've been listening to many meetings, and I first want to say to Sergio Romero's mother and his family how sorry we all are, and you know that, but I think it's important to say it again, but also how difficult it must be to talk statistics and numbers and logic when you're dealing with a loss as you are. And I can't imagine what you're going through, but I commend you each and every time we've had a meeting about this, you're here, and give your perspective, and it takes great courage, and I just want to acknowledge that, and tonight as well. So, thank you for being here. I also want to thank the large number of the public and our committee members who have been following this process, and very passionately. And I think it was said before, there's the head and the heart, and trying to consolidate the two, or trying to reconcile with the two. And the heart's telling us we want traffic signals, but the head's telling us there are issues with it, and how do you balance that out? And I agree with my colleagues about, we got to do what I think is prudent and right, and maybe not what is the most popular, but I think, given everything, what is certainly be a lot better, and certainly a lot safer. So, I appreciate that there will be disappointment that traffic lights is not on the table today. However, I think the amount of time and effort that the community has taken, and certainly staff has taken, to look at the alternatives is really commendable. I too want to express my appreciation to Mr. Bailey in particular, but also to many staff who've worked on this. And I know this was something you took very seriously as well, and it wasn't just the head working, it was the heart as well. And the, you know, very passionate meetings at points, and very emotional, and you were professional through and through, so I appreciate that very much. The road diet, it's very interesting, Mr. White, I was thinking the same thing about the road diet, that it's just sort of, it's just there, and it's happened, and it's great, and I think that's a good change, and interesting way how it came out, and so that's fine. I do want to talk a little bit about the two intersections. You know, I do take the bus to the west side on occasion, and when I take the number-one bus, I get off at San Andres and Sola to get home. And I look at that intersection here, Ortega, Milpus, and what the recommendation is, and I was thinking of Councilmember Hotchkiss's comment about the bus getting off would be the same kind of spot, right, where the bus station is there at Ortega versus where it stops at Sola, which is before the intersection. And I'll tell you, every single time, I cross Sola Street first, and then I cross San Andres, because I just feel like I don't want to cross the bus that's right there, that's this big, and, you know. So, I appreciate the comment of, you don't want to cross twice, but every single time I do it. And if the bus stop was on the other side of the intersection, it was behind me, or in front of me, actually, I would, you know, cross Sola Street behind the bus, I'd feel different about it. So, that issue of moving the crosswalk to the south side and actually looking at, I think what, I think it was what TCC was looking at in the youth council, that made sense to me, just even on a personal experience level, taking the bus. I don't know if you want to show that, just as an example, because, right, because you would take, if you wanted to, you know, right, so that would be, if you're getting off the bus, that's how you, where the crosswalk would be on the other side. So, that's just, you know, my own personal experience on a different part of town, but similar, San Andres is a pretty busy street, not as wide, but the bus stops and the different modes of transportation there, and just sort of my thought process. I guess where I come down to in the end, in trying to balance everything out, is looking at, obviously, public safety, looking at the empirical evidence and the warrants and the information we have there. But I also really want to look at what the community is asking for, and if we can't get them exactly what they want, can we get them something close enough or better than, or some of the recommendations that they're recommending to us? That's what we've asked our neighborhood advisory committee to do, and the TCC and the youth council. And I think the staff recommendations could work, and I see that there's, you know, majority support for that. But I just want to ask and think about, you know, would it be so terrible to take a little, go a little more, and take the, for example, that particular recommendation to Ortega, which is what TCC and youth council asked for, which, that's why I asked Mr. Bailey, is this worse, better, or could you live with it? And you could live with this one. It's not bad. And in fact, it also addresses and responds to what two of our committees, advisory committees has asked us to do. And that's really important to me, too, to respond back to all the work that they did. And I'm not suggesting that you're not taking that into consideration, but I think if, assuming there's no major difference between the two on an engineering or safety or empirical study, then it waits, you know, there's gravitas to that, you know, and then I think it's worth looking at. So, I would much prefer that recommendation at Ortega for those reasons. And, so that would be there. And then on Yanonali, well, we're back at the staff recommendation. I, you know, I can, I guess go either way. I understand the parking, loss of parking spaces, and there are businesses there, and we have heard from them, so I go back and forth there. So, that one is sort of six of one, half dozen of another, in the sense of if, you know, there's one recommendation looking at the three beacons with the refuge that has been, that I think, which one, I think, again, it was TCC looking at and recommending, but yet the businesses, it would impact them negatively, whereas the one that's there is better than what's there, it would be looked at again. My guess is, if that works the way we want, I'm going to think in a year, we're going to look at warrants again at that particular intersection, if the pedestrian crossing does increase. So, I know that's different than the motion. I would ask, I'm obviously fine with the other three parts to it, which is the road diet, I can go with the Yanonali intersection, and I definitely think that tonight is not the end of this conversation, it's the end of a chapter of a much longer story, in terms of looking at the whole east side, and so I appreciate that that's in the motion. But I'm wondering if we could take out the Ortega intersection one, because I'd like to vote separately on that. Not to say it's, what you're proposing is a bad idea, I just think I'd like to acknowledge that particular recommendation, like to vote on it separately. So, Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to explain why I was persuaded by Mr. Hotchkiss, so, and that was that people wouldn't have to do the double cross to get across the street. I hear you about honoring the advisory groups on this one, and, so, wow, you had me going there. Let me just talk about Yanonali for a minute. You know, I wanted to have a unanimous vote, I think it's important to, I'm ready to, you know, to back off on having the triple beacons at Yanonali. I think it would be nice to have a unified front, that we all are voting together to express our support for pedestrian and traffic safety on Milpus Street, so. And I will just wait until other people weigh in on this one, because I could go, I really could go either way on it.
Mr. House.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I just, I was responding to your request. I'm, originally, this is the plan that I supported. I listened to Mr. Hotchkiss and his thought about the pedestrian movements leaving a bus, and it made sense to me. Then I hear you speak, because you're using it. So, I'm in the same spot as Ms. Murillo. I'm willing to change my motion if there were support on here for this particular, let's see, is it 3D? Is that the one? Is that, I want to use the right nomenclature here. And so, I'm just signaling to you or to anyone else in the council here that I would support 3D in my motion, but I want to hear a little bit more first, so.
Sure. Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you started to mention when you, as you spoke, that it was kind of amazing, we kind of came to where we are, and, good lord, I even supported something that had the words "road diet" in it, which I can't stand for the record, by the way. But, one of the issues, besides the thing Mr. Hotchkiss pointed about, this alternative is, you have a lot of large commercial vehicle traffic and bus traffic on this street. I think the last thing we want is curb extensions on Milpus at this point in time. I, you know, I just think you're already talking about choke points, you're talking about issues, you don't want to push traffic out even closer to that median. I think we go back to staff's recommendation, which protects the turning radiuses, it protects commercial traffic. We brought up the Marburg trucks from time to time, as we talked about different issues. So, I really strongly feel like the staff recommendations have brought together most of the elements that we could find consensus on to move forward on this, and to redesign it now, I think, might be a mistake. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Mr. Bailey, acknowledging the mayor is a unique person and exits a bus in a special way, do you think that that would be, and I don't want to put you on the spot here, feel free to answer, however you'd like. Do you think that most people would get off the bus and just cross right over the street there? From the bus crossing, from the bus stop?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'd be speculating.
Excellent answer.
Congratulations.
Play it safe.
Diplomacy is exceptional.
Well, maybe Ms. Fisher would have an opinion.
No, let's not put anyone in the spot, you know. I'm just telling you what my experience is at another location in another part of the city, but that's, you know, you bring out, you bring all your experiences to the table when you come to a decision, right? Mr. White?
Just to respond to you, Madam Mayor, I am comfortable with the staff recommendation at Ortega Street, and so I would continue to support that. I think it's a simpler solution, and I think that Mr. Hotchkiss's comments have merit.
And Mr. Francisco? All right, so there's, well, I tried, but I think, at the end of the day, you have, we have a motion on the table. I do think, I think a strong unanimous vote on it, I don't want that to detract in the future, why was there a 6-1 vote on it? So, I tried that one. But I do think certainly that even the recommendations that came to the table and what we're looking at has a lot to do with the community coming to the staff and bringing all those options to the table, and so, and you're nodding. And I think we're going to need, and is it in the motion about the bigger study? Is there a timeline to that? I can't remember. Was there a?
Madam Mayor, I didn't put a timeline. I was responding to the staff, saying that this is part of our implementation of Plan Santa Barbara, and what we're doing tonight is sending a prioritization flag and saying, this is a high priority to the city council.
Okay.
And what I would expect is that the next time we come to you with general plan priorities, that we would bring, come to you and say, this is, you've now said this is a high priority, but still ask you then to compare with the other things that you've also told us is a high priority, as to where you want us to place this, because this is a significant work effort. And then I think especially if we're talking about not just Milpus, but also then looking at the cross streets over to Salinas.
Okay. So, this means that the next time we're talking about implementation of Plan Santa Barbara, this particular issue will be specifically listed as one of the things we need to prioritize, and will be talked about and mentioned, and, okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you. But this does relate to what we talked about last Tuesday evening, when Public Works was coming back with a timeline for developing solutions to Cliff Drive, and I asked about workload, and this has to be part of a priority for me. So, I'm thinking, is the general plan a longer, is that, that's a lot more time than we're talking about? I would sure hope it comes back when Cliff Drive does. They're equally important.
Yeah, I think with Cliff Drive, that was to help us come to a decision. I think we're at a decision, but I hear what you're saying. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.